The meeting says Board of Adjustment there, not that it matters. It's right on the side screens, but. Six fifty-nine, I got it? Seven o'clock. We'll call the August Stearns County Planning Commission meeting in order. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and. Pledge of Allegiance? We have a former member, Mike Merton, in the back. I know he doesn't want to be recognized at all, but welcome back, Mike. Good to see you. We'll do the roll call of members that are with us tonight. Obviously, if you're here, say aye. Jason Wieneren. Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Jason Cron.
Aye.
Ken Mossman. Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish.
Aye.
Joe Persky.
Aye.
And the Chair, Jeff Bertram, I'm here as well. Joe is representing the County Board. He does not vote, but he takes inner conversations and takes it back to the Board for their discussions. The first item on the agenda is to consider conditional use permit application submitted by Foxridge Properties, South Haven. Heidi's going to do the staff report. I'm sorry, it would be Jennifer.
That's all right. Yes, good evening. So this request is for a conditional use permit to expand an existing paint application facility. This is in the commercial zoning district. It's located southeast of County Road 142 in Section Five of Main Prairie Township. So you have seen this property before you a few times in the past, Legacy Building Solutions. The background I've put in the staff report there, they've been before us 2014, 15, 16, and 19 for expansions. Most recently, in 2019, they built a paint building, paint application building, and now this new structure would be right next to it, and they will be used for storage for their paint processes. The property's not in any overlay districts or areas of concern, and there aren't any wetlands in the vicinity of the expansion. Thus, in 2015, that expansion triggered the need to implement a stormwater management plan, which they did. Now, since 2015, they have added over an acre of impervious surfaces, so now we're at the point where we need to address stormwater management again for their new impervious. So we would suggest adding that as a condition of the permit. Before we would actually issue their site permit, they would have a stormwater management plan submitted and approved. Their road access is existing via an easement. No change is proposed there. The state accessibility code needs to be met with the new building, which they are familiar with that process. There's adequate parking on site. Their parking spaces are shown on one of their site plans, and they do have enough spaces to accommodate the buildings that they have out there. The applicant has obtained a hazardous waste permit and air permit from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. I did reach out to the PCA to find out if there's any issues or violations, and they have not had any enforcement issues with the site at all. Outdoor storage is generally to the, around the existing buildings, but it is screened. They have, and you see on aerial photos, and if you go out there, they have hundreds of trees around the perimeter of their property. You know, due to the height of the structures that are out there, it's not obviously possible to entirely screen them, but they do have trees planted. Let's see here. Their hours of operation are currently 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No changes proposed, no new signs are proposed. Let's see. So if the Planning Commission recommends approval, the conditions we would recommend would be, number one, the state accessibility code is required to be met, so they'll get a sign-off of their building plans from a building official before we issue their site permit. As I mentioned, we would need an approved erosion control, stormwater management plan. They'll have to submit a financial guarantee to make sure that gets implemented, and implement it within one year, maintain those stormwater facilities forever, and then we would release their financial guarantee once they have a sign-off from an engineer and as-built submitted that it was properly constructed. So this item, if moved along tonight by the Planning Commission, will go to the County Board next Tuesday, August 24th. That's all I have.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Perrell.
Yes.
Rich Blankish.
Yes.
Yes.
It'd probably help if I turned my microphone on. So the members visited the site, we got that. Ellie Fox should be with us via WebEx video. Ms. Fox, are you with us?
I am.
Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Ellie Fox, and I'll give you the, you want my home address or Legacy's address?
Home address.
Fifty-eight seventy, one hundred and sixty-third Street, South Haven, five-five-three-eight-two.
Thank you for joining us. Is there anything that you want to add to the staff report, Ellie?
No, I think it's all been covered.
By the way, Jennifer, did you make a site visit?
No, I was not able to get out there. I have been out there several times in the past.
Okay. So we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here or via WebEx that would like to share thoughts on this application? Anyone in the room or with us via WebEx that would like to share something on the issue? There's no correspondence?
Correct.
Okay. So then a motion would be ordered, in order to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move to close the public hearing. Jason Cronin, second.
Second. All those in favor, do I have to do a roll call yet on everyone? No.
Nope.
We don't need to do that. Everyone in favor of opposing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Public hearing is closed. Discussion, questions on the application?
Mr. Chair, one question for the applicant and maybe staff. So they have to apply for a hazardous waste permit, and they got that from the PCA. Seeing this is a paint building? Am I on?
You must not be on.
I'm on. I'm good. All right. Seeing as it's a paint building, is there any need for high, fire? Fire hazard reduction or anything like that required?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer. Ellie, maybe he does?
So inside our paint booth itself, there's a fire suppression system that runs throughout that entire, it's basically, we have, our paint booth is inside of our facility, so it's a self-contained structure, or self-contained unit inside of our building, and that has a fire suppression system inside of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion on the item? Seeing none, we can go to the findings of facts then. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I believe, yes, it is. Land use and zoning ordinance number four thirty-nine, Sections 4.8, 6.41, and 9.10.5Q. Any land you said is consistent with the purpose of the commercial district that is not expressly prohibited or provided, for which creates employment and economic advantage.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, I believe it does under the business goals. Business Goal One, increase the county's regional prosperity by being globally competitive in a business-friendly region.
Three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, it is compatible. The change is actually pretty minimal when you look at where it is and what it is. Hardly noticeable from any kind of traffic viewpoint or around the neighborhood, so very little impact.
Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards, criteria, stated, and ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, as per the staff report, they meet all of the ordinance standards, except for the stormwater ordinance, or the need for additional stormwater and erosion control, which we will handle in terms of the conditions.
Five, other issues pertinent to this matter. Township input, there was none. Federal, state, local permits?
No change.
Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection?
Chair, I believe those are handled with the proposed conditions?
Information submitted regarding the impact to property values in the area, we received nothing. Public health, safety, traffic generation impacts?
Minimal.
No change.
No change. Public service facilities, including schools, parks, streets, utilities? No change. Financial assurance required to guarantee reclamation or cleanup? There are the fire, financial assurances that Jennifer referenced. Other issues pertinent to the matter? Have we received any complaints on this site at all?
No complaints have been received.
Okay, that would be an other then. So with that, a motion would be in order to approve or deny?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, I would take a motion to recommend approval to the Board with two conditions.
And I will second that.
Motion's been made by Jason Cronin, seconded by Rich Blankish, to recommend approval of the County Board at their August 24th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sign. The recommendation is passed. Thank you. Thank you. Issue number two, we have the requests submitted by Jacob and Matthew Imbeck, St. Cloud, in accordance with nine point two, Stearns County subdivision ordinance number two thirty. Staff report by Jennifer?
Yes, this request is to amend the subdivision agreement that's recorded with the Platte Peterson addition plot two. The request is to allow Lot One Block One to be a residential building site, and this property doesn't have an address currently, but it's, if you went out there, you could hopefully find it between four-four-five-four-five and four-four-seven-two-one Brickyard Road. So the original plot was recorded in ninety-six with two lots. So they platted off an existing building site and then a bare lot, and this bare lot, which is under consideration tonight, at that time was deemed not buildable, so the subdivision agreement stated such. At this time, the current owners are requesting to make it buildable, and they've had a survey done to show what all the setbacks are. So they show the bluff setback, the road setback, property line setbacks. There is a narrow space on there, you can see. That would be setbacks. One change, just as a little bit of background, when this was platted in nineteen ninety-six, Brickyard Road was a county road, so a larger setback would have been required at that time. Now with it being a township road, it goes to the township setback, which is eighty-three feet from center line of the road. They also had a septic designer go out there and evaluate if there was room for sewage treatment, which there is. The designer identified two locations which are shown on the survey. There are no feedlots within seven hundred feet. The property has access, like I said, from the township road. It is in an area that is residential in nature for the most part. Let's see. Do I have anything here? The septic sites were reviewed and approved as complying with the ordinance requirements for a new building site. You know, it's not a huge buildable area. There is room. There, it's, they're right at the top of a bluff. If you were able to get out there, you saw. If the Planning Commission does recommend that the subdivision agreement be amended, we have a few suggestions or recommendations. Number one, approved sewage treatment locations is required. That has been completed, so we can cross that one off. So then we would request that a declaration of restriction be recorded that requires those two septic sites to be protected from being. those two septic sites to be protected from being disturbed. So wouldn't allow anybody to build on them, they wouldn't, they shouldn't be excavating them or compacting them, and setting those aside for sewage use. And then also, in the amended subdivision agreement, we would suggest a couple of statements. One, that they require, that they use construction site best management practices when they build out there. And then two, in order to protect those septic sites, that they would be staked and roped off before any ground disturbing activity. Nick was also out there yesterday and met with the landowner to take a look at the stairway that was constructed, so we do know there was a stairway constructed and some excavation done. The landowner has indicated that they're gonna, so there's a small wall kind of behind the stairway when you get to the bottom, they're gonna remove that wall, that would have required a permit. So they're gonna remove that, and they're gonna restore it back to what it was. The stairway will comply with stairway standards, is their intention, which doesn't require a permit for stairways. So they're planning to rectify that situation, that, that is out there right now. Yeah, that's all I have right now, and I did receive one letter when you get to the public hearing.
Thank you, Jennifer, would we make those, the conditions then? Angie sent a email that Joe and I, Commissioner Persky and I, thought those issues, the violation of the smaller retaining wall, excavation without the permits, moving the wall and using the slope?
Yes.
And the stairway, should those be individual conditions or one overall condition?
You know, that could be a condition if you would like to add that. Oh, shoot.
I keep, I keep muting myself, because if I don't, then Deb comes and tells me to mute, and then when I mute, she's gonna come, I'm leaving it on the rest of the night, guys, so. The, the email that Commissioner Persky and I got from Angie after Nick visited the site said that there's a violation of a small retaining wall, some excavation without the permits, the removal of the wall and restoring of the slope was agreed to by the applicants, and they'll move the stairway to comply with the stairway standard. So I'm wondering, do we do that as a condition, one condition with all those items, or individual conditions? Why don't we put them in both places, and then very specifically, as Angie pointed out, you know, saying specifically the small retaining wall and the restoring the slope, and addressing excavation that was done without the permits, and then move the stairway to comply? So let's make that as a condition and in the agreement, probably be the best way to do that. And then, just a quick question, it said that it was believed not to be buildable without a variance granted for setbacks. Who was that believed by? Okay. And who did that recent survey that's referenced in the staff report? O'Malley?
That's O'Malley and Crowell, yes. And I'll just repeat real quick. To answer your question, Jeff, it was deemed unbuildable by county staff back in ninety-six, and there's been a couple changes, one being the road, the road authorities now township, so that gained them seventeen feet of setback on the road. And then, when we take into account the established building line for the lake setback, that also gained them a little bit of space on the lake setback side.
Got it. Okay, members, if you visited the site, say yes when I call your name. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Crowell?
Yes.
Kim Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blenkish?
Yes.
Joe Persky?
Yes.
And I did as well. Mike got the award for driving the furthest. Staff, Nick did the review, so Jennifer, you did not, the site review?
I did not get to the site, but Nick did yesterday.
Nick did, okay. The applicant introductions, are the applicants here, or ones in person and ones in WebEx, or you decided both to come? You'd never be able to tell you're both brothers?
Mr. Chair, I had a question for Jennifer.
No, or do you want to wait?
I just, I can wait.
Let's do it now, otherwise you're gonna forget. Commissioner Persky?
Jennifer, when you talk about the plat being part of the subdivision, what was, what were the number of, of lots in the original subdivision?
Yeah, in the original subdivision was two lots.
What, meaning, which?
The lot to the south of this?
Yes.
Was part of the original plat, and then this lot. So it was one long parcel with a home. So they wanted to split off the home and sell that.
Okay.
And then, yeah, this lot was just deemed unbuildable.
Okay. And, and then, originally then, the, the other parcels, the ones across the road and the one to the north, those do not exist in, in another plat, or were they, they separate? I don't, I'm just wondering how it, it all comes together.
That's a good question. I can take a look at that while we're doing the applicant stuff, yeah.
Okay. So the applicants, if you don't mind, state your name and home address for the record, each of you, please?
I'm Matt Imdek, and I live at three-six-zero County Road fifty-four in Albany, Minnesota.
I am Jacob Imdek, and I live at one-five-six-seven-eight Parkwood Circle, Avon.
Okay, thank you. Anything you want to add to the staff report?
The retaining wall was actually removed today, and the steps, and then it was filled in. I just haven't planted it yet, because I have to get the seed, or where to get the seed from, I guess, for that.
Okay. Anything else? At this point, there might be some questions, so, okay. So we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone, well, there's at least one, Mike Merton's here for the township, I assume, and then anybody on WebEx? So if there's anyone here or on WebEx that wants to share something on this application, now's the time. Mike? And anybody on WebEx? Just identify yourself if you're with us. Go ahead, Mike, you can come up. If there's anyone on WebEx, just identify yourself. Welcome. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Mike Merton, three-eight-six-seven-eight County Road one-eight-six, Sock Center. I'm the chairman of the Sock Center Township Planning Commission, and we're all for this, or no problem with it. Just so they stay within parameters, the twenty-foot setback from the side, and twenty-four-by-thirty building, road setback. We've had a rash over the years of, they didn't know any better. Or they, they sell the property off and the next person didn't, and... So we're all for it, but just so they understand and know that the township rules, and we hate to keep granting variances.
Okay.
For nothing.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Joe?
I got a question for Mike. Mike, they, that driveway, did, so did they come into you, to the township prior to your knowing of this meeting, so was there an approval by the township?
No.
Okay. What about the, the driveway? Would they have had to have a, a, a permit or an access to put that driveway in that's existing on the property?
They should have had. I don't know if you did.
I talked to someone from the township, I can't remember who, but he never said I needed a permit, I guess. And then, he gave me some very, very basic instructions. He essentially just said if, you know, if it's on the side of a hill that, to pull the culvert in, and just happens to be exactly at the peak of a hill, so there isn't a culvert in it, and then I just tried to cut good slopes on it, so obviously if there's any accidents, that, nothing happens, so.
Rich Blenkish?
Mr. Chair, so then, Mike, what would be protocol, would have been protocol for that?
That they would have went to the township and got a permit for it, because you cannot just keep adding approaches wherever you want, or whatever, there's a distance and all that.
This is Rich Blenkish.
Rich, we just, we just went through this issue the last couple months. Township supervisors need to know about the, the need for a driveway approach, and then officially grant it in your minutes or in your meeting, so that there's documentation on that, other than, I talked to somebody, I don't remember his name, you need to have, have that done. So maybe what you should do is go to the, the Sock Center Township, and, and officially have that done.
Otherwise, no problem with it.
And I, I do have notes on it, but I, I have a lot of notes, and I can't, yeah, I would have to figure out where those notes are specifically, who I spoke to, so.
Mr. Chair?
Sean?
I'm curious, then, is the, is the driveway where it should be? Or is that something that's gonna have to be addressed?
I did not go out there since the driveway was put in. Jim Peterson, who used to do all our permitting, is the one that owned the property originally in ninety-six when this was all done, and... But no, I haven't seen the driveway.
When was the driveway put in, Matt and Jacob?
It was put in about three to four weeks ago.
Okay.
And we're more than open to moving it as needed. There was one, there was an approach there already, but we just kind of looped it around the way the lot is sitting.
It was moved because every time we would drive in there or exit it, you could not see to the north, and a car could sneak up on you very quickly, and accident very easily happened, so that's why it's at the peak of the hill, so you can see both to the south and north. And I talked to John Bosel, B-O-S-L, about it at that time, about three months ago.
The reason I ask that is if John Peterson did it, and if he was doing the permits, he probably had an idea of where it should go, but if they're open to moving it, maybe we should add that as a condition that, you know, apply for and get the permit from the township. Township will look at it. If it does need to be moved, then the condition would be that you would move it, because you said you would move it if you needed to. Unfortunately, with these things...
I don't know if they need a permit, it's like Rich said, they need a written okay, or the minutes of the town board, in the...
Right. So as long as they're aware of it now, it's a teachable moment, they're willing to do it, why don't you go to the township, show them that if they need to move it, they said they're willing to move it, and because of how, we know how this goes, it's for, in forever, so let's do it right now before...
If there was one and they moved it, then it's okay, you know, but people are adding more, and...
Yep. So you're open to doing that the way it sounds?
Correct.
Yep, so let's add that as a condition, just to nail that down, then. Okay, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I got another question.
Commissioner Persky.
What would, then, what about a protocol on any lot within the township? Do they have to come to the township prior to development on any lot?
No, not if it's a good buildable lot and has an approach, and as long as it meets all the standards. They get a building permit.
Correct.
But it doesn't have to go through the board.
But it would have to be a buildable lot, correct?
Correct.
So if this wasn't a buildable lot, they, they couldn't go to the township, or they couldn't get a building permit, right?
That is correct.
And, and so it wasn't a buildable lot to start with, correct?
That's why for twenty-five years, it hasn't been built on.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify, to, being this is in shoreline, the building permits and construction permits would be through the county, not the township, but, yeah, we would look at, see, the township has a little bit more restrictive setbacks than we do, so we will make sure that they're meeting the township's setbacks, and if they're not, that's when we send them to the township, but otherwise, we handle the permitting, because it's shoreline for the construction.
But the road, the approach, driveway would be the township?
The township, you're right.
Got it. And again, it's just a good teachable moment on any other properties you guys deal with. Go to the township and write the name down of who told you what, and then just ask. That's the biggest mistake people do, is they don't check with the township or the county, and then take notes of who told you what, and you gotta cover it, so...
And Mr. Chair, I did receive one letter from the township, if I could read that real quick. So this came from Missy, well, came from Missy Shimer's, the clerk, but it says Sock Center Township has no problem with Lot One Block One becoming a residential building site, however, there's no guarantee if a variance would be needed due to setback off the road. Thanks for your consideration, Sock Center Township Board.
Okay. And obviously, the big change was going from a township to a, from a county road to a township road, that was a huge game changer here, so... No one's with us, WebEx, no one else is in the room for this issue, so a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, still moved?
Jason Crowell, seconds.
Jason, one, actually Jason, two, I think, moves to close the public hearing. Jason, one, seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, public hearing is closed. Discussion on the application?
Mr. Chair?
Jennifer?
Could I address Commissioner Persky's question earlier about the lots in the area here?
Please.
So we know that this lot and the one south were part of Peterson Plat Two. Then to the south of that, there's one meets and bounds lot, and then south of that is the original Peterson Edition. So that, right here, we have Peterson Plat Two, south of that, Peter, the original Peterson, but then the lots to the north, for quite a ways, are unplatted. So, kind of interesting. Well, and then you get to Todd County, Todd County's right there, too. So, yeah.
And that's a whole nother world than Todd County.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, and Jennifer then was, then, did, did all the neighbors then get notification of this public hearing?
Yes, anyone within half a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, there are no findings for this, it's a straight-up deal. So a motion would be in order to
Mr. Chair?
Recommend approval of the request.
Just a question for you and staff, so we were gonna add a additional condition to this?
Three, I think, well, two, two additional ones.
Could we have those repeated?
Yeah, so what I have written, and this will be added to the amended subdivision agreement if it's approved, one item would be that restoration of the violations is required to comply with ordinance four-thirty-nine before issuing a permit out there, and I'll list those out, I'll get that email from Angie. So I'll list it out, the retaining wall, the excavation, and the stairway. And then the other addition to the subdivision would be to obtain written approval from the township for the driveway location.
Thank you.
I'll give you a copy of the email.
Perfect.
So there'd be four conditions, because number one, they've already complied with, so the two existing conditions that were written, and then the two additional ones that you just added. Thanks, Jason, for the clarification. Any, any other questions, or else, as I said, a motion would be in order to recommend approval of the agreement, subdivision agreement?
Mr. Chair, Nick, Nick, you said you did go out and, and take a look at the, did you say just the wall was gonna be removed, or the entire stairway would get removed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the, the, the retaining wall would be removed, the material that was removed from the slope underneath the stairs would be filled back in and restored and planted, and the stairs would still remain, but the bottom of where the stairs go would just be reoriented to, to reach the water. The stairway is allowable without a permit, because it is built above ground on posts.
Did, did you take a look at those posts? Were they regular grade construction lumber, was it, were they not?
I mean, I didn't look, I mean, some of them looked like old, I don't know, like telephone pole, you know, pieces that had maybe a smaller diameter, but we don't have standards on what it needs to be, so it really doesn't matter in terms of the, the ordinance and what we would require for those, it's just the dimensional requirements, and that would be above ground on a bluff.
Okay, I, I thought on a bluff, we had something about their, the quality of the material into a bluff. I don't, as I'm, as I'm looking, I thought I saw it was on regular timbers or regular two-by-fours, which, you know, would not really be something that would last for any period of time in the ground, opposed to something that was green treated or steel. You know, it, it's some of the things that we looked at on a bluff, we, I think we recommended steel
Joe, can we demand them to do everything? I guess some of this here is, is...
I guess some of this here is their problem. If somebody falls down, it's going to be their insurance that's going to have to pay for it and stuff. We can't just control the whole world here.
But if we, excuse me, Mr. Chair, but if we have standards, shouldn't it be built by standard?
He just said that we have no standards for building a stairway.
I thought we had, so.
And I assume, Nick, you'll go out and I'll view the site that the work was done today as far as the wall and you'll go out.
Mr. Chair, that is correct. I do still need to provide the plant, some plant lists of some good plants that work well for sandy soils and steep slopes to get that revegetated so that we can reduce erosion potential, so.
I think Jacob was looking for some seed ideas.
Right, that's what I would be helping provide, yeah.
Mr. Chair, one question in relation to that. Seeing as we're in a bit of a low water situation, this may not be the best season to plant. Do we have recommendations for hydro seeding it or doing something? Until such time, would you have better planning conditions?
Mr. Chair member Wienerman, I mean, it is a difficult situation where it's really dry like that, especially on a slope with sandy soils that dry out very quickly. You know, applicants can choose to water that or, I mean, if we hydro seeded, that is an option. But if it's still very dry, it really wouldn't matter what was done. If it's covered with erosion control blanket, which is what we're going to require on top of the seed, that's going to definitely make a difference and help any erosion until that vegetation does get established. So that's about the best you can do without, you know, going to great lengths to making sure that it's watered, you know, appropriately when it's.
I would assume, especially if you're trying to sell it, you're going to want to water it, you're going to want to get it established. You know, so hopefully that happens. Okay? Can we get a motion?
If there's nothing else, Jason Kroll, I'll make a motion to approve the request to amend the subdivision agreement for Peterson Edition Platte Two to allow lot one, block one, a residential building site.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Okay, Jason moves, Sean seconds, recommend approval of subdivision agreement. Any discussion? If not, I'll.
Are you making your recommendation, you start with the recommendations that we just talked about?
Yeah, thank you, Rich, with the four proposed conditions, thanks, I didn't mention that.
Thank you.
Good catch.
All those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion passes, the recommendation is made. The county board has to approve this, too.
Correct.
Yep, so twenty-fourth county board will take this up.
Mr. Chair.
Angie.
Yes, Deb just informed me that we are not able to, we're not live streaming right now. On video is not working, sound is working. So just for those people who are listening to the meeting, you are not seeing what we're seeing in the room. But we are, video, it is being taped, so it will be uploaded at a later time. And we are compliant with state law because we're all here. But yes, we know it's not working and hopefully we can get it going. But if we can't, it will be posted tomorrow.
Okay, thanks for that update, thanks, guys. Next item, number three. Consider a request for an interim use permit submitted by USS Great River Solar Minneapolis. Staff report. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. All right, this request is to construct a one megawatt solar garden in the eight forty zoning district. This property is on County Road One in section thirty-three of Brockway Township. The address is three eight five four five, County Road One, Sartell. So this site has been before you a few times. They have a one megawatt solar garden currently on the property. And they've also been before us for a rezoning to rezon to egg, to facilitate the solar garden. So the first garden was constructed out there in two thousand eighteen. And now they're requesting another one megawatt in the location shown on the map there. Let's see, so the prop, the proposal, so as we know, the property is on County Road One. The proposed plans show a new driveway coming off of County Road One for this solar garden. County Highway has indicated that they would prefer to see one driveway used for both solar gardens. And so I shared the comments with US Solar and they'll be working with the County Highway Department on the details of the driveway location and whether they consolidate it to one or what happens. But that's included as a potential condition if the permits approved, that they obtain a permit from Highway. I should back up, being that this is a new, this is our first request we've seen for an interim use permit for solar. In the past, they've always been conditional. So now with it being an interim use permit, we will need to set an expiration date. And they're requesting it be valid for forty-one years. And in their application narrative, they explained their reasoning on that. We don't have any precedence to say what we've done in the past on that. So that'll be a new point of discussion. The property is farmland, as you can see, very little elevation change. It's not on prime farmland as defined in our county comp plan on the prime farmland soils map. Oh, let's see, so they are proposing to do screening, they have screening around the current solar garden and they're proposing screening on this new solar garden on the north side and the east side along the county road. Let's see, the decom, oh, there's no tree removal that's going to occur. They will plant the native habitat that's required for beneficial habitat under the solar panels. There's no wetlands in the project area. The decommissioning, they submitted a decommissioning plan. We suggest a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar cash escrow or letter of credit to cover the cost of decommissioning. A supplemental fee, oh, in their application, they did offer a supplemental fee to sort of mitigate the fact that there may not be the taxes achieved on the size of a solar garden, but the county doesn't accept those. So that is not, not an item we'll be discussing, I guess. So the LISA score was run for this property in the area of the solar garden, it came back at seventy-two. When we look at their whole hundred and fifty-seven acre farm parcel, it's seventy-seven for the LISA. So a little bit higher on the whole parcel, but still both are above the sixty-five threshold. As to the decommissioning in their comments, they did mention that Albany Recycling is one facility that they could bring materials to. So I did reach out to Albany Recycling because they're local and we've worked with them on permitting their site. And they did indicate to me, I'll just read what they said, Justin Overman there, the owner, the owner said, "We do handle solar panel recycling for several solar companies. We're able to tap into some of our same downlines that we have in the electronic recycling industry. The old CRT style TVs, which were glass and some good stuff and bad, require the same shredders and techniques as solar panel recycling." He said, "US Solar did reach out to us and I explained the process and we are able to help out with that. That being said, I'm sure the industry and technology will change dramatically by then, but will only get more efficient and cheaper, I would foresee." Thanks, Justin. So that was just the feedback I got from Albany Recycling on that note. So if the permit would be approved, we would have a number of conditions that you'd set an expiration date. Like I mentioned, they are requesting forty-one years, that would bring us to December thirty-first, twenty sixty-two. A condition that they have a qualified engineer certified, the foundation and design of the solar panels is within accepted professional standards before issuing the construction permit. Submitting the financial guarantee for decommissioning, notifying the county at least a year prior to decommissioning and then an updated estimate would be provided and we would have an opportunity to collect an additional guarantee if needed. The requirement that they install and establish ground cover meeting the beneficial habitat standards. Again, they'll need to submit a financial guarantee to ensure that gets planted correctly. That guarantee is kept for a minimum of three years to ensure it's properly established. The, then we do inspections every, every year, the first three years and every three years after that so that we have a fee that we require with their construction permit to cover those costs. And then also to notify the department when the site is ceded and who the contact will be for re-inspections. Vegetative screening shall be added on the east side and the north side as proposed. And they also need to submit to us a financial guarantee to make sure that goes in. We keep that one also for three, no. Yeah, we keep that one for three years to make sure that the plants are properly growing. Approach permit is required from the Highway Department. And then lastly, notify the departments if there's any change in project ownership, including the new contact information. The developers shall also make the landowner aware of all conditions related to the CUP. That's what I have.
Okay. Members, if you visited the site, say yes when I call your name. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Kroll?
I have previously, not this time.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Grell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Joe Persky?
Yes.
And I visit the site again as well. Applique, applicant introductions, Ms. Sims is with us via Webex. Are you with us, Ms. Sims?
I am, yes, can you all hear me okay?
Yep, if the volume can be turned up a little bit, that might be helped on our end here. State your name and address for the record, please.
Great, my name is Michelle Sims, address is one hundred North Sixth Street, number four ten B, Minneapolis.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, I have a few remarks to add on at this time, if that works.
Sure, go ahead.
Awesome, so yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for having me here tonight. I am, once again, my name is Michelle, I'm here with US Solar for USS Great River Solar LLC. US Solar, we're a Minnesota-based company that develops, owns and operates community solar gardens. And I'm here to discuss our application for an interim use permit to construct, own and operate a one megawatt solar farm on seven point eight three acres of the parcel owned by Meadowbrook Dairy Farm. John and Mary Lou Uterman were unable to make the meeting tonight. The project, USS Great River Solar LLC, will be located on the southeastern quadrant of the Meadowbrook parcel, near the existing solar farm. And Stearns County's ordinance allows for a second solar farm on a parcel through the IUP process, which is nearly identical to the requirements for all solar farms prior to the change this past spring. The project is not located on prime farmland. And to offer some perspective as to the amount of farmland used in this project, it would use a hair over one, one thousandth of a percent of the farmland in Stearns County. And in order to use one percent of the farmland in Stearns County, the county would need to permit eight hundred and seventy solar farms of this size, just to put things in the perspective. And the vast majority of farmland in the county that is converted into non-aguses is from non-solar development. Other than the existing solar farm, the next nearest solar farm is just under ten miles away as the crow flies. The proposed project is over a mile from Sartell city limits, over half a mile from the Sartell expansion zone, and it's over two miles from the Saint Stephen city limit and expansion zone. Brockway Township is aware of and supports the solar garden as well. So the project meets the county's required setbacks. It would be screened along the northern and eastern fence lines as Jennifer stated. And throughout the approved rezoning application for the property and throughout the IUP process, no neighbors have voiced any concern. The project would generate enough clean energy to power about two hundred and twenty-five homes annually. And most of this energy would be consumed by the residents, businesses and public entities here in Sartell, Saint Stephen, La Sock and Saint Cloud areas of Stearns County. Couple notes on visual impact, so in building our projects, we seek to create no visual impact and preserve the county's character. The nearest home is located approximately three hundred and fifty feet east of the project's fence. And their view would be buffered by existing trees as well as the new screening. The next nearest homes are located five hundred and fifteen feet northeast, eight hundred and forty feet southeast from the solar farm, both of which have existing slats of trees separating their home from view. And the Uterman's property extends fourteen hundred feet north of the project and eighteen hundred feet west. I have reached out to the surrounding neighbors, no neighbors have expressed concern to either myself or the county at this point regarding the proposed project. So there is no visual impact to neighboring residences or public roadways. I now have a fifty-second clip of a video tour of a solar garden that we put together for you all. And Jennifer, you can go ahead and play this if that works for you.
Yes, we're going to play it now.
Excellent, so, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'll just continue on it, just a couple more remarks. So thank you all for watching the video. Another note that I wanted to bring up is that the solar panels we use are made out of the same things as cell phones, silicon glass, silver and copper mostly. There are no hazardous materials involved whatsoever. And on a biological note, Westwood Professional Services evaluated this project site based on the DNR's Minnesota County Biological Survey. And there have been no biological concerns found within the project premises. Now, a couple notes on the removal process. So our lease with the landowner requires us to decommission the site. The PV modules will be removed and resold as they are warranted to produce eighty percent of their day one output in year thirty. The remaining materials, along with any panels deemed necessary to recycle, will be recycled at Albany Recycling Center, which is twenty-five miles away from the project. And in our application, we had proposed, as Jennifer mentioned, providing a supplemental fee and decommissioning surety to the county as a means to provide more direct value in light of the conversation surrounding production tax, because this is the second solar garden proposed on a parcel. However, we've learned that the county does not accept supplemental fees and so we're unable to provide that. We still offer our decommissioning surety. And a couple of comments on what we did propose. Based on the Department of Commerce's recommendation letter, which the county has historically used to determine financial surety requirements. The average state-funded project has a one hundred and twenty thousand per megawatt gross decommissioning estimate funded at year fifteen. And the state permitted projects in this analysis use three hundred and twenty watt approximate panels compared with the five hundred and forty watt panels we're proposing here. So that, these existing solar garden, or this solar garden requires about forty percent fewer panels. So the cost of decommissioning based on this document would be about forty percent of the per megawatt cost of the state permitted project. So we proposed in our application that the county follow this ERA recommendation letter that has been discussed, adjust it for the project size yielding a decommissioning financial surety of seventy-two thousand two hundred funded at year fifteen. And as an additional note to just share it all with you, I, we would like to propose providing this as a bond if that is an option. We would like to propose a bond because many developers do sell their projects at the point of construction to large-scale corporations such as Berkshire Hathaway. To these corporations who do currently own many projects in Stearns County, setting aside this amount of money is no big deal. Whereas on the other hand, we are the long-term owner and operator as a local business and we have no plans to sell our project. And so for companies like us, that upfront cash surety requirement is very crippling and may ultimately kill the project and prevent us from bringing the benefits of solar to the community. So I just wanted to provide an overview of where the developer, owner and operators see this surety coming from and in summary, we would propose that performance bond of seventy-two thousand to the county at year fifteen. Couple notes on length of term, as Jennifer mentioned, we proposed a forty-one year term for three reasons. First, the project would be constructed within a year of permit date, which would allow for forty years of operation. Second, our lease with Meadowbrook lasts forty years. And third, as mentioned above, the panels are warranted to produce eighty percent of their production in year thirty. We'll still be producing quite a valuable commodity in forty years. And the remaining one hundred and forty-four acres of the parcel is available for farming and potential future development at the landowner and county's discretion in the future. So a couple of final notes here. These projects offer direct financial benefits to Stearns County residences and entities. Notable entities who subscribe to solar garden and save money include the Sartell Saint Stephen schools and the city of Saint Cloud. Additionally, the community will benefit from the private investment pollinator friendly habitat as you require for solar gardens. This increases crop yields nearby. This increases crop yields nearby and improves soil, water, and air quality. So, in conclusion, I'd like to thank county staff for their diligent work on this project. I worked closely with Jennifer to ensure our application is compliant with the county land use and zoning ordinance number 439, which permits a second one-megawatt solar farm on a parcel in the A40 district with an interim use permit. We have done everything possible to bring the benefits to the community while integrating with its existing character. This is an interim use permit, which meets your requirements for approval. And we would like to request an objective analysis of our project, the applicable ordinance, and would respectfully request that the planning commission recommend approval of our application for interim use permit. So, thanks for listening, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Let's open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here or on WebEx regarding this application? Please identify yourself now. Seeing no one in the room, hearing no one on WebEx. The public hearing is open. No correspondence, Jennifer?
Correct.
Okay, no correspondence. So, let's keep the public hearing open. Members, questions?
Mr. Chair, just one correction for staff on the condition number seven. Interim use permit, not conditional.
We'll make that correction. Members, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky?
Michelle, can you hear me? Okay. Say, you?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, Ken.
You say that the nearest solar farm was 10 miles away? Is that what you said?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Persky, other than the one next, right next to it on the parcel, the next closest one is just under 10 miles as the crow flies from this project.
Well, actually, the one that you had on the video, was that not the one that's just north of the high school in Sartell?
Commissioner Persky, that, the video I showed is actually, that was taped at one of our projects in Scandia in Shisago County.
Oh, okay.
But it's a very similar design, so it works well to show everyone what we're.
All right. But I did, just for the record, actually, there is one, I think about two miles down the road. It's right next to the high school. And so, I mean, you'd reference that it's 10 miles away. Actually, there's one just on the township road that's on the west side of this property. So, and it's a fairly large one, if anybody's been out, you know, to that area, so.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Persky, thanks for clarifying. I had pulled that from the solar farms layer in the county GIS, so maybe I overlooked the municipal solar gardens, perhaps.
Okay.
Thanks for the question.
Members and staff, I'm gonna ask questions. Everybody knows it. And I want them to be detailed in the minutes. And I don't care if board members or staff say it's unconventional or all the other rhetorical stuff that's been mentioned in meetings. I'm gonna do my job and ask the questions, because we're not getting answers. So, see if you can keep up with me, Melissa, on the questions. First of all, for members, we've done all these conditional use permits. This is interim, as I said. At first, remember, when we started doing, way before the 40-plus projects we've got now, remember, they told us 20, 25-year-length projects? So, suddenly now, we're requiring them to do an interim use permit. Now, they're saying, oh, wait a minute, it's gonna be 40 years. And again, I don't care, but when we're approving things, I do care about, is it 25 years or is it 41 years? Huge difference. So, just, again, a mention that I wanna make on that. The leases score, we'll talk about later. Did, did I do the site reviews? I think I did.
Yes.
Staff, who did the site review for staff?
I didn't go out there on this. When I was out there within the last year to look at their, so.
And then, Melissa, maybe you can help me with this one. It says the, well, the farm will provide savings to neighboring school districts, cities, and subscribers. I don't know how many of you are XL customers, but in my bill this month, anybody can see this if they want to, you all got it if you're XL customers. It says that they're gonna raise rates for four reasons. Renewable development fund, transmission cost recovery fund, and a renewable energy standard are all cited. And then, they go into detail in the middle of the brochure. And again, I can scan this or give it to staff. They're saying they're raising their rates because of solar. So, maybe you should talk to XL Energy and tell them not to raise the rates because of solar, when they're supposedly saving, saving them money, Melissa. And the?
Mr. Chair, my name is Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. So, then, the farmland, I disagree on number five. It says it's not prime farmland, but the leases score is 7280 and the 77.51 in the two parcels. I disagree with that. And I'll talk about prime farmland a little bit here. The existing community solar garden in Stearns County covers approximately 280 acres of land. Help me, Michelle, when you say that it was that minute amount of land, is that just farmland, or is that land, all land, where homes, shopping centers, gravel pits, everything is, or is it specifically farmland?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, you're speaking for solar gardens specifically in the land they're covering, correct?
Correct. You're saying that it only takes up that minute amount. Was that of all land, or is that of just farmland?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe that is just a farmland value, like agricultural land covered up by solar.
And if you want mine, you know, the staff can follow up with this. Just confirm that in the future, and staff can share it with us. Because that's, that's a very important discretion, because we've got over 40 farms, 10-acre average, that's 400 acres. There's about 100,000 panels, 10,000 panels per farm, about, a little bit less. So, we've got over 400,000 panels. So, it's a little bit more than what it's kind of being referenced, in my opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, just to clarify, when we first began building these projects in probably 2015, 2016, the panels were 380-watt modules or lower. And we're now up to 540 watts. So, we've seen the actual acreage go from 10 down to six or seven. And as you can see in this application, it's 7.83, so a bit on the higher end of that range of acreage. But we're seeing, because of the efficiency is growing so rapidly, we're seeing much smaller one-megawatt projects with much fewer panels. And our project here has 2,592 panels, which is significantly less than the 10,000-year quoting. And I think that most of the ones that have been permitted within the last year would be closer to this 2,500, 3,000, 4,000-panel count.
And that might be helpful, too, for staff to identify, because in the other, of course, I'm one of those anal guys that keeps everything. The initial applications, it was over 75, 8,000 panels. So, if that's a change, by all means, let's verify that, that that, but there are of the 40, I don't know how many of those have 8,000 panels, and how many have the fewer. I know Commissioner Persky and I talked about this, and we actually disagreed. So, somebody can help answer this. On, the pages aren't numbered, so I can't, but in your application, where it talks about financial, it says brings increased tax revenue and more jobs. The increased tax revenue, Joe wasn't aware that the township and the county get money for this. Is that accurate, staff? Or, Michelle? Or don't you get money for this?
Mr. Chair, can you repeat the question?
Does the county get money, revenue, permitting, or something, and the township to have a solar farm within a township within the county?
Mr. Chair, that would be a question that we can get back to you on from our county assessor, Jeff Johnson. He would have to be the one to answer that specific question, because I don't believe there's, they pay into the green energy production tax, because that's based on megawatt size. But I could definitely follow up and have Jeff get the planning commission that information.
Because I guess I'm asking, Michelle, where's the increased tax revenue coming from?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yes. To clarify, we do not pay a production tax, because we're not over one megawatt. However, state law currently does not allow us to do over one megawatt, so we're kind of stuck in this corner on what we can do. However, I, this is really complex, and I think that we would have to refer to Jeff Johnson to give the nuances of it. But I know it really depends on, like, the zoning of a specific parcel and the surrounding parcels, on whether the property tax classification is changed from agricultural to commercial, which, if it is, due to the location and proximity and space of the proposed project, that is typically a tax increase and results in more tax revenue for the community. However, it is required to go, depending on the surrounding properties, many factors that Jeff Johnson is the expert of and not myself, it may or may not be changed. And so, I would defer to him on the nuances of that.
So, staff will get back to us on that. But your reference in your application, you say increased tax revenue. What's that increased tax revenue?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that is kind of a broader assumption, because we have often seen our properties change designations. And so, in the application, I put that in there as an assumption. I do not, have not verified if that would occur on this property, because it is, again, very nuanced.
Got it. So, that may not be accurate, we'll clarify that. And then, the more jobs, is that like for the installation, the couple weeks that it takes to install? Because there's no people on site or anything. Where do the more jobs come from? I guess, I'm just curious.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we have many local employees who service the ongoing vegetation management. As stated, we put in screening, that needs to be implemented and maintained. And then, the vegetation, native habitat throughout the site, that's continually mowed during the first several years to make sure it establishes. And that creates local jobs as well. And then, construction, as mentioned, is also a job produced in the community, created in the community.
If anybody's got anything, jump in. Again, unconventional or whatever, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask them. Number six, you say there's a strong disincentive for solar companies to do business here. And you talked about your decommissioning, the, it's not a bond. We've done it the same for all of them. I guess I just have to ask if there's a disincentive. Why does Stearns County have over 40 permitted solar farms, and there's a, potentially 100 in the, in the works of applications? There's three right now for administrative approval, unless there's been more that I haven't been made aware of. So, if it's a disincentive, boy, it's sure not slowing anybody down in Stearns County. So, where's the disincentive, I guess?
Yeah, Commissioner, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as mentioned, US Solar develops, owns, and operates our projects. This is contrasting to many of the developers you may see, who are, I don't believe there's 100 currently applying. But there are developers who apply, who sell it off at the point of construction to a new owner, who is most often a larger retainer corporation. And for US Solar, we just wanted to set the record straight that, in regards to decommissioning, the county doesn't actually have any legal authority to decommission the project. There'd be a number of things that have to happen. And we understand that you may require this, but we just wanted to put it on the record that we, it is quite a lot of an upfront investment for us who are funding the project. And we would like to see something matching the document you're based off of. But just for other companies, they may not have that concern when they're trying to permit a project, because they're not gonna own it, and they're not gonna be the ones responsible for funding it. And I would also note that Stearns County is quite large inland area, and the XL territory is also fairly substantial. And so, I'm sure that has led to a number of solar gardens here. I know Shisago County has, I believe, 45, so they might be up a little bit above you. But I know that there are concerns that Stearns County has a lot in comparison to other counties, so.
And maybe, and again, that's another question, Michelle, you can answer and staff can answer, of how many are in the works. I'm not sure how you'd know that there weren't up to 100 in the works or discussing, but that could be accurate. That's not the information I've received, but let's find that out. And then, the last issue, just to humor everybody, I'll quit. The McLeod County denies the prime farmland, land use. Again, some people are saying, we gotta keep this the land use. Well, this is land use, guys. So, McLeod County denies it on one issue, and that's the Natural Resources Conservation Service rating, prime farmland. And this is a quote that they use that defines prime farmland. "Prime farmland is of major importance in meeting the nation's short and long-range needs for food and fiber. Because of the spie of high-quality farmland is limited, the US Department of Agriculture recognizes that responsible levels of government, as well as individuals, should encourage and facilitate the wise use of our nation's prime farmland." And prime farmland definition goes into very specific definitions. If you go back to the IPS application on the cash one, in their own application, they described prime farmland, which included the cash property, certainly includes this, because there's much higher leases scores. So, that's all I've got for now, and then we'll do the findings and go from there.
Mr. Chair? Ken Mossman? I have, this here, I agree with you with the seven, with the leases score. The only problem we have here is, this wasn't our 10 zoning at one point in time, and we zoned it backward. So, now what do we consider it? That it was our, so it wasn't farmland anymore? And now, we've recreated it? And they're gonna do this? So, I'm kinda, I agree with you 100% on the, with the leases score, but then we've got it, it was already zoned our 10, what, 20 years ago, something like this? So, it has been out of the agricultural field for a long time. And I just have a question, so which way do we look at it?
And I guess, Ken, the way I look at it is, being an old farm boy, and I still farm, farmland is farmland. I don't care what it's zoned. You look at the use, not at the zone, and it's farmland. And again, 20 farms, 30 farms, where's the limit? The one that we all agreed on, seven of us voted not to recommend denial, the Stamer one in Zion Township, that was a huge wetlands thing. Well, that wasn't farmland, that was wetlands. And it was unanimous. But, so there, in this case, this land, again, it's, it's farmland, and it doesn't matter what it's zoned. It's farmland. Again, we can say, well, it's only one more, or it's only .09. We're not stopping this. There's no stopping on the horizon, and there's no stopping to answer all these questions that a lot of folks have. So, I guess this is our, this is our chance, so.
I'd like to speak here.
Yep.
Rich? Fellow Commissioners, did any of you read the article in the Tribune here this past weekend in regards to solar panels and the improvement on production?
There's a new solar panel coming out in a short period of time that will double the amount of electricity that the current ones produce. And Michelle, you can chime in here if you were familiar with that article or what you were hearing from the industry side. But when I hear that now, now I'm thinking, okay, current Minnesota law is one megawatt. So, if they're going to double the production of the panels, that would mean that we could cut the size of the solar arrays in half. Am I correct on that, Michelle?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blankish, that is correct in some ways. Basically, as I mentioned before, with the older modules that were less productive, we needed closer to 10 acres. Now, with these ones, we're up to 540 watts, and we only need six to seven. So, if it did, in fact, double, I would expect to be looking at three to four acres per megawatt. And, I mean, even since 2015, we've seen the panel production, or the panel efficiency go up by 40%. So, I'm not too surprised that it's looking at doubling again here. But yeah, you can definitely see how the efficiency has just increased drastically with technology changing. And so, I'd expect to see less land required per megawatt.
Mr. Chair, question for the applicant. I'm not sure how this works from the solar perspective, but, you know, this is a 41-year request for the interim use permit. We've seen a lot of efficiencies gained in solar panels in the last five, six years, so you start to extrapolate out 40. Things should get a lot better. Would you be restricted to one megawatt within that footprint 10 years from now, if efficiencies... Would you be restricted to one megawatt within that footprint 10 years from now if efficiencies were gained, or would you be able to produce more than the one megawatt out of that same footprint if you replaced them with newer panels?
Yeah, Mr. Comis, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, excellent question. That would be a policy question. I think depending on, Stearns County would definitely have a seat at the table on that because this is for a one megawatt interim use permit, and if we wanted to do more, we'd have to come back, we'd have to discuss about perhaps getting like another interim use permit for another megawatt, or editing, amending the existing one to do that. And then I'm sure it would also have to be with, we'd have to be coordinating with XL because as I mentioned, right now, interconnection agreements are capped at one megawatt. So we'd have to work something out with them where we could have multiple megawatts on an original one megawatt interconnection type thing. But I do definitely foresee that as panels, I mean, like I mentioned earlier, they're going to decrease over time in their production, but it's not very much. I mean, it's 80% in year 30. So at that point, we could perhaps like replace any ones that are really underproducing with a higher efficiency one to maintain that one megawatt. There's a lot of ways that this can be really sustainable. I do think we could add another megawatt eventually, or multiple, but again, Stearns County would have to approve that, and XL Energy would have to create a program that allows that, and I'm sure state statutes would also have to be changed.
Okay, thank you.
Great question.
And then one follow-up question to that is, what is the significance of the 41-year request? To the chair's point earlier, typically, we do see 25-year requests. I understand that there's, you know, a payback and a feasibility thing, depending on how you depreciate these things out. But what is, I guess, what is the significance of 41 years?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so, couple of things to note is, our agreement with XL Energy is 25 years for interconnection at this point. Our lease with the landowner is 25 years with some extension options for a maximum of 40 years. And we foresee that in the future, we can extend this agreement with XL Energy at that point in time. And so the reason we're asking for 40 years is that our lease agreement is for 40 years, or we're asking for 41 because the lease is 41, or 40 years. We start construction after receiving a permit, and we have to be operational, or at late-stage construction by a year from the date of permit. So that kind of gives us a year to construct it, and then like a 40-year potential operational window. So that's the request for 40 years, that's what it's based on. I will note too, that the conditional use permits that were previously required for all solar gardens don't have an end date. So I'm sure, I know people have said it's going to be 25 years, but I don't believe they actually have an expiration date the same way that an interim use permit does. So hence, we're, we're asking for a 41-year term with an expiration in 41 years.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions, Jason. And on that last issue, that's part of my concern is, again, you go by what we're being given, and everything that we were given was 25 years, and it was kind of downplayed as saying, we'll do this for 25 years, then we're going to take them out of the ground and farmer can go back and farm it again. Well, now that's a little different, saying, okay, we're going to do it for 40 years with potential extensions, that, that's a different story. And again, I don't know if anybody would have voted differently had we been made aware of that. The taxation, does staff have any answers on that right now about if they produce more than one megawatt? And if you don't, then do you want to maybe say something?
Mr. Chair, unless Jennifer's got that, I would like you to articulate that question so I can write it down.
Jason's point of if they produce, if these panels become as efficient as they say they are, and they put in this 2,851 panels that Michelle says they're going to put in, and they become so efficient that they're producing two megawatt, is that, does that change from the county standpoint, the interim use permit? A gentleman in the audience is putting his finger up in the air. The public hearing is still open, you certainly can come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to time in after him as well, if that's okay.
Yes, hello, Planning Commission, my name is Alex Pollet. My address is 244 Fourth Street East, St. Paul, Minnesota, 55101. I am the Field Director for the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition. We are a group of farmers, business owners, just individual citizens who talk about renewable energy. We come in from our very property rights first, letting landlords decide in making these, these business deals, secure their, their financial future for their family. To answer a couple of the questions that have been brought up, currently state law in Minnesota, all one-megawatt solar panels do not receive any production tax. Outside of a state law that needs to be changed, and we at the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition endorse going into the books and making sure that this is beneficial for counties because it's beneficial to the farmers or their families. So we'd like to see it benefit the, the whole community, because we've seen that these utility scales, it has to look closer, okay, it's like I've never done this before. So we want to see, because at the community scale, at the utility scale level, we see counties like Lincoln County was able to put in broadband. We saw projects, these utility scale projects done in Cottonwood, the counties were able to freeze their property taxes for two years. So we'd like to see some of those benefits be extended for these smaller projects. We agree that that is a problem, but the crux of the issue still comes down to making sure that landowners have a right to utilize their land how they see fit, and have that conversation with each other, say, hey, this is a project for us to help put money in our pocket, to help secure our family in this community for a longer term. Families are leaving these rural areas, and this is helping, putting money in their pocket to stay and pass it on to future generations, and that's what we would like to see. And we understand the concern of, of prime farmland, but our organization feels very strongly that currently in Minnesota, only .04% is being used. We could increase our solar production by 100% and just be at 4%. Now, I know that's a lot of things, it's kind of scary, but we'd also, from our organization, our view on, on the prime farmland debate is this, when you start saying things like, prime farmland needs to stay prime farmland, it is very scary to start saying, well, what prime farmland, and what farming do, they have to do on it. Now it opens the door to government saying, all right, Farmer Brown, you have to grow corn, Farmer Jones, you have to grow sugarbeets. It is a very slippery slope, and the crux of this issue still will always boil down to letting these farmers and landowners decide for themselves and their families if this is beneficial to them. They decide a private agreement and a leasing agreement with another business, and that should be always focused and considered. And that's our group's, our organization, and hopefully it helps answer a couple of questions with the one megawatt. We think it's wrong, and there should be some sort of production tax on it. That's where our organization stands, and we're looking to move forward on that in this, this upcoming session. But that hopefully answers questions and kind of opens up a few new avenues of thought as we have this discussion. Thank you.
Just stay right there for a minute. Following your logic on landowners' rights, I think Jason and I are probably the two biggest members on pro-landowner rights. Then why do we make the index? Why do we make them do the slope and the stairway? We'd let them do whatever they want to do, they own the property, they could sell that property for $50,000 more for that lot. Why aren't we letting everybody do what they want to do on their property then?
That's a very good question. Our organization will always start saying to the, the ordinance of that is, is, is still, I like to see that, there still has to be some rules, and we, we agree that there should be, you know, setbacks, and we understand that, you know, setbacks and where we're in screening, and all the other requirements you put on solar gardens is the same as why, how you have to have your stairs or your slopes. So there are, you still can still put some ordinances in place. So our logical is be still allowing them, because if they follow all the ordinances, they could still put stairs and a slope and, and still utilize it how they would like. But that's what it kind of comes down to. I mean, I'd still like to see, you know, for, like, you know, our group's still always organized that we agree that there probably shouldn't be rules, but if the county has rules, we should still allow it and still have that as the back of the mind.
Because there's a lot of landowners that we've restricted, and in fact, even the index, it was noted, they were told they couldn't build on the lot. And that's why I asked, by whom? Well, now, now they can be built on the lot, well, it's a whole different, if you can build on a lot, that property's worth a lot more than if you can't build on it. So again, I'm all for property rights, but then I think we should get out of this whole sandpit siding and, you know, all these other things that we're doing, let people do with their land what they want. I think I heard a question over here. Oh, Joe.
Ask the person here. So then, are you saying that you would be an advocate for the change to, to put a production tax then onto these ones that are producing? You would be in support of that?
We would encourage, I can't openly support, I'm not a lobbyist, so I'd encourage.
Okay, because that, that has been an issue for the counties and for the townships because, you know, looking at the way the land is used and looking, looking how the land gets appreciated, moving from rental for crop and now rental for solar, there's a considerable improvement. And of course, then there's also the loss of those jobs and, and the person actually turning that soil and working that soil that would otherwise be present in the area, and now that person's not going to be there. So as far as a change of, of tax structure, it doesn't have to be outrageous, but there should be maybe an increase on it.
We, we find very similar to that. That would be a, a wise thing, we encourage something like that in the state looking at it. But it is a state, it is a state with the Minnesota IRS that needs to be addressed, so that would be a state-level conversation.
Commissioner Persky, that wasn't caught on the recording, I don't know if you want to repeat it or not.
Talk real close to the microphone, Joe.
Okay, my green light is on. My question was again, about just being advocate for the change because, you know, we see that this is, remains in agriculture tax base, and actually, there's a considerable benefit financially from the change going from, let's say, beans and corn to going to solar, and that, that should be somewhat of a change, so that maybe that reflects in the, in the land use because of that change. Also, I have just a question, you mentioned that, you know, this is an op, option for local farmers, but the reality is though too, it's, it's the landlord, by putting the solar gardens there, that there's no necessity for that person that owns the land to, to work the soil year after year as they would if they were a farmer.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, could, could somebody just quickly reiterate what Commissioner Persky said at the end there, I didn't fully catch it with the recording.
We're going to try it again, talk like this, Joe.
For, for the third time, I'll try it, Michelle. Okay, if I come any closer, I'll be chewing on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky.
Okay. Michelle, I just want to say that, you know, this is an opportunity for those landowners. But I also, I tell you what, I, I go back to my family farm, my ma just passed, she's 101 years old, she milked cows before she went to school, and I considered her a farmer. And I consider the people that are farmers are people that till the soil and put seeds in the ground, and, and have their families out there working the fields. Just because a person's a landlord doesn't necessarily make them a farmer, okay? And I very much have a lot of respect for the farmers in Stearns County, the people that are up before the, the break of day, the kids that are out there in their work clothes in the barn, and then they come in and shower so they don't smell like the barn, okay? Those to me are real farmers. And some of these folks that are benefiting from this are just landlords.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here.
I think, I think Michelle was going to respond, Jason, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. Yeah, Commissioner Persky, I, I completely agree with you, and I was just going to say as well that I did some farming research in college, and I mean, we've seen this incredibly depressing trend of farmers having to sell their farms to get by, people having to take different routes that they never foresaw to try to contain a bit of the ownership on a multi-generational family farm. And so I think that while I totally agree with your sentiment, I just wanted to say that that is not everyone's financial situation, and I'm not saying that's what we're saying here tonight, but I just wanted to reiterate that because somebody is interested in solar or, hey, this whole property's residential ten, if the Utermans wanted to turn it into homes, would we be having the same conversation? So I just wanted to say that. And then I also just wanted to say, I know there is some, on, we're not on the same page about prime farmland, but we did refer, in the application for interim use permit, it asks you to look at a map in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and according to that map, this property is not prime farmland, and so I completely understand the other perspectives as well. But I just think based on what the county has put forward as the benchmark for prime farmland, we are not prime farmland at this time. And so if that's something that the Planning Commission thinks should be changed, I think that's a county conversation, and not a decision to base, or not a statistic to base our projects we pulled off of. And at the same time, I mean, as I just mentioned, it, it used to be R10 in this area, the rest of the parcel is R10. If they came through with an application to turn this into homes, would we be having the same conversation about that this is prime farmland? So, thank you. That's, that's all I wanted to add here.
Jason?
Yeah, Jason Wienerman. If we're narrowing the definition of farmer to somebody who produces and plants seeds and raise crops, we have a whole lot of farmers in Stearns County who use CRP. There's a whole lot of reinvest in Minnesota acreage, which is still considered ag land. So if we're talking about folks who are planting seeds and harvesting crops, are those people not farmers? Have we stripped them out of the equation? One thing I think about when we're looking at these sites is we, there's a requirement that is put into habitat for pollinators, and that's effectively an NRCS Bowser mix for permanent cover for pollinators. So basically, what we're looking at here is a non-state funded rim easement for 40 years upon which they're putting solar collectors. So not only are they restoring the habitat, restoring the soil, improving water conditions, improving air quality conditions, they're also harvesting sunlight off this site for 40 years for a year-round basis. So, I mean, with the drought we're seeing this year, we're seeing folks harvesting their rim acres because people aren't having hay or any of the wheat or anything. So we're seeing producers who are actually harvesting the crop from rim. In this case, producers, the landowners, who would, in this case, the Meadowbrook Dairy, would still be harvesting the sun and also improving their soil conditions as well. So by redefining these folks as not being farmers, we're doing a disservice to those folks who are considering putting their land in long-term conservation easements for the benefit of the sites.
Appreciate that perspective. I had CRP, they were 10 acres, there's no posts and solar panels, and Rich at some point will print the article, I hope, that says what the solar panels are made of, he just got that. So, and then I farmed the rest of it, there was 32 acres that was in CRP. And the rim stuff, I don't know, but they're not 41-year contracts, and they're not, they're not harvesting, I, I love those farm terms, harvesting, they're harvesting money, I mean, and God bless them, at whose expense, I guess we'll have to find out, but...
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, did I, was there a question I asked, or?
I was just going to make a point if you, if I could.
Is it relevant to what we're...
Well, it was to the prime farmland thing, because...
Did they didn't have their microphone on?
No, no. I was just going to explain why the lease score is high, but on the maps we look at for prime farmland, it's not prime farmland, if you, if you want to know why there's that difference.
And that discretion happened after we were talking about, where we did deny an application, suddenly the lease score wasn't the lease score anymore. Suddenly, there was a caveat, a spin on the lease score, which is, we've all seen the site, you know, other applications you saw, there was crops being planted, so, but, yep, we can split hairs over that, but it is what it is, and everybody will have to make their own decision on that. So the public hearing's still open, nobody's, Webex with us, nobody else is in the room, so I guess a motion would be in order, close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, as of Rich.
Jason Cronin second.
Rich moves, close the public hearing, Jason Cronin moves second it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Public hearing is closed, discussion, I think we pretty much had that. Anybody has, have any final thoughts before we go to the findings?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a comment, because I, I've had concerns on a lot of the, the past applications that have come up on solar panels, or sorry, solar gardens. And there's concerns, nothing stays static in, in this world, there are always improvements, modifications, things changing, and I recognize that's going to continue to happen when it comes to solar in future years. When I look at these right now, I really look at it from a land use perspective, and, in this instance, I don't have as, as large of an issue with, with, you know, approving something like this as I do with some other brand-new ones that we're going to put out in a ag field that's not connected to anything else. This one is adjacent to an existing solar panel, or solar garden, and for that reason, I look at it differently than I have some of the others. So for what that's worth, I have a little different... So for what that's worth, I have a little different opinion on this one than I have on some past for those reasons.
And I think the challenge is, part of the challenge is today, Commissioner Persky and I talked to commissioners from Benton and Sherburne at the Tri-County Waste Commission. They had moratoriums. Wright County had a moratorium. The Clouds denying them. All, but some of us, Michelle's been very helpful tonight, this application was spot-on. But let's face it, we were letting the IPS applications come through, who now they've threatened the county, and they're suing the county, which was a terrible application. And so we've let them through, and we're not asking the questions, we're not bringing it down to a more specific. And again, if we could get a moratorium, we could get people like Melissa that don't have, you know, interpersonal connections. Michelle and Melissa, you can bring her with too, if you want to. And, you know, then we can have that kind of discussion, get these things all factually answered. I'd feel more comfortable, but I've still, you know, with all these, PCA at the county board working session, what was that, two, three weeks ago, said in their written report, you can't landfill the solar panels and you can't recycle them. How many times have you heard me ask every applicant, what are you gonna do with them? Where are they gonna go? Well, now, Melissa, let me check. Michelle, see, I called you Melissa once, I'm gonna keep calling you that. So now Michelle says Albany Recycling takes them. I too called them. They will take them. PCA, just three weeks ago, who again are evidently the people, said you can't landfill them, you can't recycle them. Well, again, I'm sorry, I'm too practical, which one is it? So again, Michelle's been helpful in saying you can. And when I saw in the application, I called the Overmans, yep, it's even on their website. Because I said, if they're making, if they're constructing these and a panel breaks, if you can't landfill them, I asked the question, I didn't get an answer. If you can't landfill them and you can't recycle them, what do you do with them? Well, now you can recycle. So, okay, that's one positive answer. But again, there's way too many unanswered questions, and there's way too, there's other things, but anyway. So any other discussion before we do the findings? If not, this is gonna make me up, the numbers are off. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I believe it is, is Jason Cronin. Land use and zoning ordinance number 439, section 4.18, 6.54, and 9.3.6. Solar farm is allowed as an interim use permit in the Ag 40 zoning district.
And I would say that it is not in compliance with ordinance 439, land use and zoning ordinance 1.2. A, protecting and promoting public health, safety, welfare, and morals. B, promoting and providing the orderly development of agriculture. C, preserving agricultural land and animal agriculture. D, conserving natural areas of the county. And F, providing official controls by implement the goals and policies included in Stearns County Comprehensive Plan. And under zoning districts, 9.11, the purpose, definition, the purpose of this district is to maintain and conserve agricultural lands which are historically valuable for crop and animal production, pasture land, natural habitat for wildlife within the Comprehensive Plan, limited development land use area. Right out of the ordinance, guys, that's land use, so I disagree that that is. Three, is the proposal compatible with existing neighborhood, with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin. As I mentioned earlier, there is a solar garden right next to it, so you can argue this one both ways. There's cornfields next to it, and there's a solar garden next to it. So it's consistent in some ways and inconsistent in others.
Okay, are we gonna state the agricultural goals? And I guess we didn't do that. I did the ordinance, but I didn't do the actual goals for, I jumped ahead one, because these are misnumbered, so I'm off.
So, Mr. Chair, that was Commissioner Cronin answered?
Number three.
Three, okay, got it.
Number three. So number two...
Comprehensive goals.
The comprehensive goals, does it comply or does it not? List the sections.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. Sort of. In terms of the concentrated residential, which is in the future land use map of the county plan, this would not be appropriate with that concentrated residential land use. However, we did readjust this to an A40 land use, under which it is consistent with the land use ordinance and the section of the county plan. And I would say it's comp plan goals and policies, under the clean energy policy, number two, continue to require beneficial habitat, ground cover on solar sites. And number five, to encourage the development and use of renewable energy systems throughout the county, including wind and solar.
Members?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, I would add, you know, cite solar under clean energy policies, cite solar energy systems in a way that reduces conflict with adjacent land uses. To me, the big one here is that it's right next to another solar garden. We're not introducing a new solar garden into a different area that breaks up farmland. So, but under the same ag goals, you can look up above, and it says retain areas with highly valued agricultural land or economically viable animal agriculture operations. And this is good soil. So you can argue it both ways with the comprehensive goals as well.
I'm just, I'm gonna forget this if I don't make the point. Think about this, Jason, help me after the meeting. If, would you, how would you feel, would have you felt more comfortable if it's a 2-megawatt right out of the gate? And you, and I don't, I don't want, I'm not putting you on the spot, but help me so I don't forget this. And then number two, do you think it would be better, and the only reason we all know that they're doing these 1-megawatt is to get around the PUC requirement, and how does that make you feel? And again, I might put you on the spot, but let's have that conversation.
It's okay, I'll answer it now.
Okay, I'd be curious, because I don't know, that's just gut reaction to what you just said.
I'd answer it now, and I would always favor something that is done with production in mind. You gain efficiencies by doing things in large tracks. So to me, from a land use perspective, it's a much better utilization of property to set something up that's efficient. Now, there's exceptions to all those rules, I get it, but why wouldn't you set things up that are the most efficient and the most productive? And that's generally gonna be to run all your wires and locate them close and be very strategic in planning where you'd put that.
So you're saying like doing the 2-watt, 2-megawatt?
Yeah, 2 or more, you know.
And yet, do you agree with me that they're not doing that strictly to get around the PUC requirements?
Yes.
Saying that, that's another just concern of mine, because I'd rather have the PUC, believe it or not, not the PCA so much, but they'd be in more control, and PUC would be in control. I'd rather have those people be into control than some of these poor townships and, but it was a question I popped up.
Like a lot of things, I think regulations and policies and things are put in place with the right intentions, but they have sometimes unintended consequences, and we deal with them sometimes when it comes to land use.
Anybody else on the goals?
I'm looking at agricultural rules, number two, utilize sustainable practices to protect prime farmland. Well, we kind of have a conflict here, what's prime farmland? We're saying LISA score is very high, but then in the 2040 plan, I think the map indicates it's not prime farmland. So we have a conflict going on here in regards to that. I think we need to get that clarified somewhere along the line. It's confusing.
So are you saying it complies or it doesn't comply?
I'm saying it doesn't, it, are we working with a piece of prime farmland, or aren't we working with a piece? You see what I'm saying here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Under agricultural use policies, number five, projects that are located in agricultural areas and are not agriculturally oriented should follow the Comprehensive Plan's future land use. Factors to minimize conflicts with adjacent land uses and natural resources. So we're talking about, yes, they want to put this adjacent to a current solar array, but what's due west of those two parcels or those two projects? I think it's proposed residential land. So it doesn't fit.
I think agricultural goals, number three, it does not comply, retain areas with highly valued agricultural land. We talked about that. Number five, agricultural goals, strengthen and retain areas with highly valued agricultural land, viable animal agriculture. Under agricultural use policies, number two, it does not comply, emphasize the importance of animal agriculture to the county economy by treating it as a priority land use in the area compared with residential or other non-agricultural uses. We just went through the Comprehensive Plan less than a year ago, but that's what we said. Number four, it does not comply, encourage sustainable agricultural practice that protects prime farmland and water resources for future generations. Under agricultural use policies, number five, protect projects that are located in agricultural area that are not agriculturally oriented should follow Comprehensive Plan future land use to minimize conflicts. Under crop and product diversification, encourage the diversification of crops and products to enhance Stearns County's regional agricultural presence. And the last one would be animal agricultural policies, it does not comply, follow pollution controls consistent with the state requirements. Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated the standard criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, I think the applicant's actually done a really nice job of putting this application together and researching things like, how would the panels be recycled and where? Talking to local recycling facility that would do that. And all of those were done with the intention of meeting the criteria of the ordinance.
Five, other issues pertinent, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I can also, under number four, we do have the seven proposed conditions, and I would recommend the cash escrow and letter of credit be the escrow requirements at $185,000, as per the ordinance. I know the applicant requested a bond or, and a lesser amount, but I would recommend stating, staying with what we have under three. And we can't do a bond, right? We've been through that.
That's correct.
So a bond would be ineligible.
Nothing else? Five, other issues pertinent to the matter, say something when it comes up. Township input, there was a reference that Brockway supports it. I didn't see nothing in the application, or did I miss that? Do we have a letter or anything from them?
We didn't get anything from Brockway.
Michelle said that they did, so I'm gonna take her word on that, but I don't know what Melissa would say, but Michelle said they did, so. Federal, state, local permits?
Mr. Chair, submitted or will be acquired as required?
Environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, well hip protection I would say the decommissioning still is not 100%. This was a big step forward tonight, but it's still not 100% addressed. Information submitted regarding the impact to property values, we received nothing.
Mr. Chair, actually, the Land and Liberty gentleman did talk about some land use, so that was an interesting perspective we've never heard before. So he, I would put his comments under property values as a potential consideration that we've heard for the first time.
Okay, then maybe he can share, like, information that's like factual, not that it's not factual, but something in print that backs what you said with staff, and they can share that with us. But that's a good point, let's recognize it was shared as a public hearing process. Public health, safety, traffic generation impacts?
There was the access, which is identified as a condition.
Public service and facilities, including schools, parks, streets, utilities?
Minimal, Mr. Chair.
Financial assurances required to guarantee reclamation cleanup? Jason addressed that, it's in there, $185,000. Other issues pertinent to the matter? If not, then a motion would be in order to recommend approval or denial?
I got a question. What have we settled on in regards to the length of this? Are we doing the 40?
We, we didn't decide.
We didn't settle in? Do you want to be consistent?
Well, now that, there is no consistency, because now that it's, these are all gonna be IUPs, but whatever we do tonight, that's what everybody's gonna point to and say, well, you did it for that one, so we better be prepared for that. Jason said we could do it as part of the motion. And it looks like he's ready to make a motion. Not you, this, Jason.
Yeah. Okay.
No, no, you can say something, but I didn't want to confuse which.
It's okay, I'll wait.
Okay.
Since everybody's waiting in anticipation. Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I'll make the motion that we recommend approval of this interim use permit for USS Great River Solar LLC for the installation of a 1-megawatt solar garden under an interim use permit for a period of 41 years.
Motion's been made.
Oh, and in addition to the conditions as a defense staff report.
Recognizing that we might be setting a precedence, Jason, would you be open to changing that to 26 years? With the comments from Michelle earlier, but then understanding technology, a lot of things can change over that time, trying to make it, since it is interim, as short a duration, but yet obviously feasible. If there's a 25-year commitment from Excel, and it's gonna take a year to get online, I would second a 26-year.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right, in which case, and Jason Cronin would second with that change to 26.
So it's a limited year, 26 years, so somebody do the math, we have to say a year.
Oh, boy.
2047, December 31st. Ken did that, but for the record, Ken did that in his head, so.
Week or two after you retire.
It's still working. Okay, motion's been made by Jason Wienerman, seconded by Jason Cronin, recommend to the county board for approval for a 26-year IUP with all the conditions and everything as stated. Okay? Well, let's, what if it's unanimous, then we don't have to? Everybody in favor of it, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
No.
No. Okay, now we'll have to do a roll call. So again, those people who are in favor of the motion that was made by Jason Wienerman and Jason, seconded by Jason Cronin, to recommend approval to the county board, when I call your names, say aye. And those who are opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
No.
Jason Cronin.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
No.
Mike Perrell.
No.
Rich Blankish.
Aye.
The chair votes no.
Motion failed, 4 to 3.
4 to 3?
Yep.
So then someone who voted no makes the motion to recommend denial.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move that we recommend denial of this application.
Okay, motion's been made by Sean, recommend denial of the application.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
Ken Mossman seconds it. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of recommending denial to the county board, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no.
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 Okay, roll call. If you're for the motion to recommend denial to the county board, say yes. If you're against it, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Cronin?
No.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
No.
And the chair votes aye. So four to three, the recommendation is made, the county board recommend denial to their August 24th meeting. Item number four, to consider an after-the-fact request of a major shoreline alteration submitted by Angela Larson. We'll have the staff report from Nick, I assume?
Correct, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. This is a request for topographic alteration in a shoreline overlay district. It's on a parcel just shy of 10 acres in size. The underlying topography in the project area is relatively flat with less than an 8% slope. There were large mounds created for a racetrack in this area. The vegetation in the area, there is some vegetation present on the side slopes of the racetrack ramps. Buffer of varying size exists between the disturbed area and the unnamed to the Watatab River tributary stream. This project never had erosion control in place that we saw. The edges are mounted slightly to reduce runoff. That was the only form of any kind of erosion or sediment control that was seen on the site. The septic system was installed in November 2019 and is considered compliant. Property history is listed in the staff report. In May of 2019, we issued a construction site permit for the property. In November of last year, a site inspection for a follow-up on the construction found the violation of this, of this, of this project on the property. In May of this year, an abatement order was issued and a violation report was issued. A compliance agreement was signed in July. We made an additional site visit last month and the application here is before us today. The application seeks to keep as graded and excavated a volume of material of about 300 yards. We kind of estimated it at, the applicants didn't really provide the amount. They did state that no additional material was hauled into the site. It was all material that was graded and moved on the site. The one recommended condition here, we referenced the signed compliance agreement. That compliance agreement requires that the seeding that is required, that is required in that development to be done for a buffer along the creek of 50 feet and then planting as specified in the agreement to take place on the site. So if this were approved, it would be essentially approving to keep the ramps and those berms as they were graded and placed or not. The agreement will still have to be followed regardless of the outcome tonight to plant the areas in the agreement and the 50-foot buffer along the creek as required. We didn't receive any written correspondence for this application. And I believe that is all I have.
Okay. Members who visited the site, if you did say yes, if you're going to call your name, if you didn't, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Cronin?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Whitehead?
Yes.
Mr. Persky?
Yes.
The chair visited the site as well. Application introductions, we have Lee Hanson here, Hanson Law Firm, that is representing the applicant.
There's the microphone again. So let me take that all back and let's start over again. We have Lee Hanson, Hanson Law Office here representing the applicant. Do you want to state your name and address for the record, please, Lee?
Lee Hanson, 548 115th Street, Northeast Rice, Minnesota.
Thank you, Lee. You have anything to add to the staff report that Nick gave?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission and staff, we're here really to ask for forgiveness on behalf of Wade and Angie Larson. And I would ask that you give us more time to do the seeding because it's been so dry this year. Any seeding, we've got an agreement with the people to do the seeding, but it's just not going to take because of the dry weather. And wait until there's moisture and if there's moisture this fall, we'll seed this fall, but we want this to be as done as properly as possible. And I would ask that you not require removal of the berms that are out there. I think it's, this is a residential area, it's a rural residential area. And from what I have learned, and this is no excuse, we have, we have put a bond up and many of the other residents in this area have not followed through on their required landscaping. And as in my discussions with Ms. Berg, she told me that the county is holding bonds on all those places also. And we want to, we want to do what's right.
Okay. Thank you, Lee. We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the room or on WebEx that would like to weigh in on this application? Anybody in the room? I don't see anybody. Anybody on WebEx? I don't hear anybody.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I recommend we, I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Sean. Is there a second? Jason Cronin seconds a motion to close public hearing and discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair?
You can give my second because I was on mute.
No, I was actually going to say something.
Go ahead.
But not that.
Go ahead.
Chair, I just wanted to point out, this was a plat not too, not too many years ago. And the whole reason or requirement for the native plant buffer was their stormwater management plan. So I know you don't see plats a whole lot anymore because we don't have a lot of large subdivisions, but they're required to do stormwater management. In this particular situation, the engineer determined that their stormwater management was going to be going from row crop to, in this case, native seeding. So the curve number, the runoff potential is going to be significantly lower because you're going from row crop to native plant. So just kind of by way of background, that's why it was a requirement of the subdivision agreement. And in case you happen to remember this plat back a few years ago, I just wanted to bring that, bring you back to the original requirement.
Rose called me about it.
So it's that long ago?
Or that recent, it was only five or six years ago.
I didn't know, I was thinking of a different.
No.
So did it come through plating committee and then the planning commission at that point? So what staff's five-second overview on the neighbors and what Lee's saying about not getting it established and everything?
Mr. Chair, I'll comment on that. Lee and I have talked quite a bit. So what happened was the Larsons canceled their bond on us. And so upon canceling the bond, then we were forced to issue an abatement order and violation report because now we have an unfinished project that we don't have money to make sure is followed up on per the plat requirements. And so I don't, I did not analyze all of the other lots in the parts, in the plat to determine at what stage is their project. Some of them are just building right now, so they wouldn't, we wouldn't even be looking to give their money back or confirming that it's done. So we do have valid financial guarantees for the lots that are built on and except, well, now we have one for this. We'll make sure that, that they're followed through just like we did on this one before the money is returned. The only reason this one was, our hand was forced is because Mr. Larson canceled the bond.
And that bond's been reactivated?
That's correct. Mr. Hanson, Mr. Hanson was able to get that done for us.
In effect of when?
Mr. Chair, Lee, perhaps you remember the date, but it was maybe in June?
Yeah. Your letters were sent May 19th, so it would have been the first couple of weeks in June.
Got it. So they are active.
Yes, and it's non-cancelable now until the county cancels it.
Lee has that way of making things happen, don't you, Lee? Good for you.
I told him they would be in court otherwise.
So the next thing would be?
Mr. Chair, questions?
No correspondence, right? Nothing? Jason?
Yeah, question for staff. So, so what we're doing here is we're, we're taking their plat agreements and it says agrees to the implement the stormwater seeding required by P-012703 in the subdivision agreement. So we're just going back to that. Correct?
Mr. Chair, member Wienerman, so that's where it gets complicated. If the planning commission and county board would approve the dirt bike track to remain, then they wouldn't be complying with the subdivision agreement requirement for the native plantings. And so that's where it gets complicated. That's where you, as a planning commission, need to understand the whole picture.
So we're talking about reseeding in the area? What do they re, what has to, what is bringing them back into compliance?
Mr. Chair, member Wienerman, bringing them back into compliance would be everything, I believe it's a 50-foot buffer from, let me see if I can get aerial photo. It would be basically 50-foot buffer from this wood line is what was required to be planted in natives.
All right, so, so what? We're approving an after-the-fact alteration. And according to Nick, there's some kind of revegetation, right? They're going to do some replanting.
Mr. Chair, member Wienerman, not as part of this application.
Okay, okay. I'm good, I got it.
And the bike path was not a part of that original plat, but now it's there. And Lee said that they'd like to keep it.
Yes. It's just going to be more alterations to level it all out again.
There's two issues. One, the bond wasn't active, that's active. And then do we approve it or reapprove it basically with the understanding that that bike path is there? Right?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So then, Mr. Chair, Ken Mossman, then, so those, this, then it says less than two times the required setback. Does that have any meaning then at all? Because now they're saying, well, they needed, it was because they didn't have the plants growing or whatever.
Mr. Chair, member Mossman, the reason why it is before you today is because it was more than 100 cubic yards of material that was moved in that area. That's what would make it a major shoreline alteration request. So it's the volume of material that close to the water body that triggered it as a after-the-fact request for a condition to use permit.
And it was moved for the bike path?
Right, so all of those berms and ramps, all of that material is topographic alteration, which is regulated by, by the shoreline ordinance.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, Mike Perrell, when they, when they say the total amount estimated was 300 yards, I've moved a lot of dirt and those berms out there, that's a lot more than 300 yards. I would say if they, I'd like to have knocked back down and reseeded.
Okay. Discussion?
Chair?
Mr. Persky?
I just want to ask about Mike's question. And Nick, can we go back to that aerial with the large picture? Yeah, so with that, that yellow line, then was it recommended though that those berms be, be taken down and leveled?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, we don't have a recommendation really for what to remove or to stay. The request is to keep everything as constructed. So essentially, the area that's within that 50-foot buffer area would need to be replanted regardless of the outcome tonight. But aside from that, the request is to keep everything as constructed. And we're not, as staff, we're not making a recommendation either way. We don't make the recommendations to approve or deny the portions, but.
Okay, but, but the portions to the wooded side of the yellow line are to be reseeded, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, the current buffer that you see there is between roughly 20, 25 feet and 100 feet from the creek. So as you go closer to the right side of that picture, it's less than, that 100, it's more like 20 to 25 towards the right side of that picture. So areas beyond the wood line would have to be seeded in long portions of that.
And then Nick, as I look at this picture, this would be, would this be a land disturbance? Would there should be, there be a silt fence in that area?
Yes, there should have been sediment control around the entire perimeter. That is a very standard practice that's specified by the ordinance for sediment control on any alteration, land alteration site.
So does that need to be addressed at this time at all?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, that could, I mean, that could be an additional requirement if it's not required to be vegetated outside of what's required in the compliance agreement. You know, there are berms that are kind of, you know, preventing water from running off towards the creek. So in some way, that is some form of sediment control. But it would be the planning commission's discretion if that was a condition that wanted to be added. You would have to think about when that silt fence would need to be removed. You know, if there was a certain date or vegetation that would need to be established before it would be removed, otherwise it wouldn't serve a function necessarily.
Nobody's here for the public hearing. I think we can close then.
Jason Cronin makes a motion to close public hearing.
Sean Blackburn seconds that.
Motion's been made and seconded to close public hearing. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, after-the-fact major shorelands are always tough. You look at the intent of the ordinance when it comes to land use and it's to make sure that one person's land use doesn't negatively impact others. So in this case, it's, it's about the Watatab Creek. As much as I don't like after-the-fact applications, this one, to me, I don't see dramatically impacting others if the buffers are put in as, as required anyway. The reality is, I just don't see a lot of runoff getting to that creek with the way things are set up out there. So I don't have a, I don't have major issues with it. I do have issues, it'd be better if, obviously it would have been planned ahead of time and done the right way. But that's, I guess, my stance on this one.
Staff comments were made that the neighbors are waiting to see if the requirements are changed or not. And again, just so I understand this, Nick, you said that's not going to change. Planting's going to happen no matter what, that's why the bond is there, so that's going to happen. It's really just the burr is what we're, so do we agree with that or not? So that would be the thing. So should we try to do the findings and then see where that goes? Number one, can the applicant sufficiently document that the alteration was done to protect water quality, improve aesthetics, control erosion, or enhance habitat?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I believe the installation of a dirt bike track doesn't hit any of those points? So no.
Two, why did the applicant fail to obtain an alteration permit or comply with the requirements before doing the work? Do you, Nick or Lee, do you have any idea?
I, I don't know. I was not involved in this at that time. I kind of think it's because they didn't know, but I'm not sure of that.
Okay. Nick, do you know?
Mr. Chair, I do not. I was not given any indications either way or why.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, as per the staff report, there was a construction site permit issued for the property. So there was a permit issued from the property and then this was done after that. So there was, something happened between the issue- So there was something happened between the issuance of the permit and this. So they followed one permit, but not this one.
Did the homeowner operate the equipment to do all the alterations? Okay.
Yes, Ken Mossman. I happened to talk to the wife because she was there, and I didn't want to go wandering all over, and that's what her husband does. He has equipment and does things like that. And she said it was a matter of they got a 15 and a 16-year-old that need to get off their high nens and get out and do something, is what she told me. And my first thought was it was like the lady from Albany said a few months ago, this is gonna last a year, two years, these kids are gonna be gone in college, and this'll either be put back or just be sitting there. So...
I think we have an ordinance for that. Don't we get off your butt and do something? I think that's four, three, two, I think. Number three, did the applicant obtain all other required permits and comply with other requirements? Which is a very good question. Building permit, is there any... Well, the bond, but they've reactivated that. So they complied with the building permit, they applied, complied now with the bond, and now it's non-retractable. Anything else that they didn't comply with that we're aware of, staff? No?
Well, Mr. Chair, the subdivision agreement for the seeding, but that's what we have a compliance agreement on.
So that's, yeah, ultimately going to be done. Okay. So the answer would say then, no. Four, is the alteration in a sensitive area, shore bluff, impact zone, wetland buffer, county biological, other documented highly, high-value habitat?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crowe, I'm gonna... It is and it is not. It's obviously within the requirement, it's close to a tributary stream, but it's a relatively flat area with not a lot of highly erodible soils. So from that regard, the mounds do not appear that they'd provide a lot of significant impact to that stream if the buffers and everything else are put in place as in the compliance agreement.
Five, is the alteration visible from the Lake Republic water?
Mr. Chair, no.
It is not.
Unless you'd be on that stream in your little canoe somehow, you could see it.
So it is not. Six, does the alteration affect the character of the neighborhood? Will it result in substantial detriment to the neighborhood properties?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I believe it does alter the character of the neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood that now has a dirt bike track in the back of it, which I believe some landowners might be surprised about.
And that can go one way or the other. I have three of them within a quarter mile of my house.
True. I actually, I mean, I agree with you, Jason. It's visible. I'm just wondering if it's relevant to a major shoreline alteration that's not visible from the public waterway in this particular case. I agree it's visible, I just don't know if that's relevant in this case.
Seven, did the alteration reduce or eliminate an existing buffer between the ordinary high-water level water and impervious surfaces or create more direct conduit of stormwater? Based on staff report, Nick's comments, it actually slowed it, potentially could slow it down. Eight, did the alteration change or damage any of the following categories? Aesthetics of the shore? No. Character of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Yep, little bit. Vegetated buffer? A little bit. Erosion sediment control device, system? Little bit. Pro, potentially. Stormwater management device? I don't think it affected that. There isn't nothing. Fish or wildlife habitat?
No.
Water quality?
No.
Nine, could the applicant mitigate the damage or change without removing the alteration and restoring the sites? Please explain how the mitigation would occur and result in mitigation. It could, the applicant could mitigate it by removing the alteration, but is that the best avenue? I guess would be the question. And that's number 10. Would the minimum benefits to the county appear to be far outweighed by the detriment to the applicant would suffer if forced to restore the alteration? So if they had to restore it, is the county benefiting more than it's hurting the applicant by restoring it? And I would say it is. It's hurting the applicant more than it's benefiting the county.
Mr. Chair, as there are other parcels in this plat area who are still under construction, if we do approve this after-the-fact alteration, we may see more of these. We may see neighboring landowners say, hey, great, we're gonna do this on our parcel. So we might see, if we approve this, other folks believing they can do it on their property as well. So by accepting this, we might be opening a door that we don't want to open.
Mr. Chair, and I want to agree with Jason there. Would you read that question again?
Would the minimum benefits to the county appear to be far outweighed by the detriment to the landowner or the applicant would suffer if forced to restore the alteration?
You know, I've always struggled with that question because you talk about the county. You know, the people in Melrose probably aren't being disturbed by this. The people in Sock Center are probably not being disturbed by this, and the people, you know, in Sartell are not. But the people that live next door are. And so when we talk about the detriment to the county across the majority of the county, it's not any matter to them, but to the neighbors it might be. I just struggle with the way we have that question and the way we look at that question. Because again, if any one of the people in the county lived in those houses next to that neighbor, to them it would matter. So just curious about the way we have that question and how we interpret that question.
Mr. Chair, Mike Perle, I'm on the same line of thinking as that. The way I look at it is, why should I be looking at the detriment to the applicant when he didn't follow the rules and he just built it now, he's asking for forgiveness? To me, it doesn't compute.
Mr. Chair, I guess this is part of what we're gonna come up with, giving all these 10-acre, these R10s out, because somebody buys 10 acres? I want to use this land, or else I could have built my house on two. And this year, these people just shouldn't have bought a lot next to a creek. They should have bought a lot where it was just bare farmland, and they could have done pretty much whatever.
Well, I think we talked enough about this. We're at a point where we're gonna make a motion, recommendation to recommend approval or recommend denial. I've seen a lot worse than this. It's unfortunate it happened. This is my thought. And going with the solar land rights, the guy left now, I'm all for land rights, so let it buck. So let's make a motion.
Oh, I didn't know if that was your formal motion.
No, it isn't. I don't like making motions.
I will make a motion to recommend approval with the condition to conform to the compliance agreement.
Okay, Jason Crowe makes a recommendation to approve with the understanding of compliance?
Mr. Chair, I will second that. Ken Mossman?
Ken Mossman seconds that? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say no.
No.
Let's do a roll. If you're in favor of recommending approval of the after-the-fact application, say yes. If you're opposed, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Crowe?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perle?
No.
Rich Blankish?
No.
The chair votes aye. Four to three with the recommendation to recommend approval by the county board. So the motion passes.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Lee. Number five, to consider a conditional use permit application submitted by Ellen Zener, Zener Dairy, Paintsville, staff report?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is a request to modify a permitted 64-foot by 200-foot total confinement barn to a 64-foot by 216-foot total confinement barn. Also a request to construct an additional 64-foot by 216-foot total confinement barn, a 32-by-36-foot total confinement barn, and proposing to modify the current concrete feed pad to a 92-by-250 permanent mineral storage area. Those are outlined on the FELOT footprint map in your packet as number seven, number 10, number 11, and number nine. This is located at 305-13240th Street in Paintsville, Minnesota, which is Section 18 of Zion Township. Some additional relevant information regarding this request is that the FELOT's been registered with the county and state since August 18th of 2000 and meets all state and county registration requirements. We received their joint county and state application for this FELOT request on July 6th of 2021. The current facility has permitted total and partial confinement barns that contain bed pack or drain to a liquid mineral storage area. Part of your packet lists the current proposal within the FELOT permit application that we received. The applicant is requesting to remain at the previously permitted 999 animal unit max allowed for the FELOT facility with the approved CUP P-018233 in March of 2021, and is requesting to amend the building's proposed and mineral storage handling portion of CUP P-018233. It was inspected on July 21st of 2021 and was deemed to compliant with Minnesota Rule Chapter 7020 in Stearns County Ordinance. The FELOT was re-inspected on July 6th of 2021 and was compliant with Minnesota Rule Chapter 7020 in Stearns County Ordinance 439. All the surrounding properties are zoned A80. There's 12 residents and seven existing FELOTs within one mile. The nearest residence to the FELOT is 1,315 feet to the northeast. An updated mineral management plan will be reviewed and will be required to meet the MPCA guidelines prior to the issuance of the requested FELOT construction permit. I will update that bullet point as we did receive that from the applicant yesterday afternoon. So staff will be reviewing that and making sure that it meets all the requirements prior to permit issuance. They had two soil samples that were due. We did receive those in May. So that is actually part of their mineral management plan now, all the information is part of that. Their dairy liquid mineral, which constitutes approximately 38% of the total nitrogen produced, is proposed to be transferred, which is still consistent with the submitted MMP that's been updated. We have no valid complaints on file for this FELOT facility. The proposed construction will not disturb one acre of soil, so the applicant will not be required to complete a stormwater pollution prevention plan. An environmental assessment worksheet, environmental impact statement, state disposal system permit or national pollution discharge elimination system permit are not required at this time. The draft minutes are from the FELOT review committee from July 28th of 2021 are included in your packet. And then our recommendations are also listed in your packet, which are just the two conditions, that the applicant shall contact ESD within three days of construction completion, so a post-construction inspection may be completed, and that the owner shall construct all proposed improvements according to plan specifications and guidelines submitted with application unless otherwise approved by the Environmental Services Department. And we did have two site visits, which were listed in the background, January 21st of 2021 by staff and July 6th of 2021 by staff, and that's all I have.
Yes?
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Hello? I say no. Am I on here, Betsy Jo?
Ellen, is that you?
Yes.
Just state your name and address for the record, please, and then if Sheri's with you as well, just name an address.
Ellen Voight, 305-86240th Street, Paintsville.
I think, just wait, Ellen. I'm sorry, I thought I had Ellen Zener. We're gonna do the applicants first, and then you'll be able to talk after we introduce them. Is Ellen Zener and Sheri Carmichael with us?
Yes.
Okay, can you state your names and addresses for the record? And then we'll do the applicant review first, and then we'll go into the public hearing. So Sheri, just state your name and address for the record. Are we having technical issues?
Ms. Zeners, can you state your name and address again for the record?
Okay, Ellen and Sheri, if you can hear us, you're muting yourself, so unmute yourself and try to state your name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Sheri Carmichael, address is 305-13240th Street, Paintsville, Minnesota, 56362, representing Zener Dairy LLC and Ellen Zener, who is unable to attend due to farm work.
Okay, is there anything you want to add to the staff report, Sheri?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay. So then we'll open the public hearing, and then now Ellen Voight, if you're with us, now you can state your name and address for the record and share your thoughts.
Ellen Voight, 305-86240th Street, Paintsville, Minnesota.
Okay.
I say no to this. Let's, I guess, where do you want me to start?
Well, let's start at the beginning and then see if we can work through it.
Okay. I understand he applied for a 64 by 200, and now it's 216 feet? Is that he applied for this? And it appears when I'm on 313th Avenue, is that it... The building appears to be complete already, but the permit has not been approved? Is that so?
The original permit for 200...
Sheri, Sheri, we'll let staff answer that question. We'll allow Ellen to make his comments, staff will answer the question, and then you'll get a chance to speak after that's over with. So Bethy Jo, do you want to respond to that question about the permit?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board and the public participating. So with the prior permit and conditional use permit being approved, there was the permit that was issued for the construction of the 64-by-200-length building. So part of that is technically they did do have a permit to start construction, but to finish the construction at 216 feet is where now they are asking for... They're requesting for the modification and the other items listed in that general description as part of your packet.
Okay, so Ellen Voight, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess he continues to do stuff like this. He just does it and then asks for forgiveness later. And I have to live next to the guy. I've been here for 22 years. He does, he's not what I would call an ideal neighbor. And he is currently planting corn on my property, and he has planted corn on the road right-of-way. I was talking to a Michael Decker about the road right-of-way on 240th Street, which is four rods, which would be 66 feet. And if you go from the center of the road to his first row of corn going to the south, he has, the first row of corn is at seven steps, would be approximately 21 feet from the center of the road. And that, he has been applying manure, he's been applying chemicals, he kills it, he does all this stuff, and it's the road right-of-way. And it also blocks the view of traffic that is trying to come out on, you know, from the intersection. And, I don't know, I guess, has anybody on the board been out there to look at this place to see how close the corn is planted to the road?
Yeah, we've all been out, did a site review, except for one member, Jason Crowe did that.
Okay. So what, I mean, you didn't look at this and say, wow, this corn is pretty close to the road, or you just weren't looking for that?
Well, just state your, what your feelings, and, you know, we'll, we're, right now we're just more interested in what you think.
Okay. I think absolute no on this. The township did a resolution on August 13th of 1984. The town supervisor was Joe Golly about the road right-of-way. I have talked to the township about this, and they just kind of blow me off. One of the biggest problems is that I, they recently purchased a piece of property to the west of my driveway, and there are two manure piles out there that, when I called on Bethy Jo about this, she said, oh, no, there's only one. And I say, oh, so they lied to her, too. There are two. They are, I, so say, 18 years ago, I was milking, and I had a map of the section that said where you could and could not pile manure, and that is not an area where it could be piled. And so they lied to her. I'm just wondering on the committee here how many other people have been misled. And I guess I'm standing here right now because I am flat out, I made this point, if Bethy is present about the, my, the things that I know about Al Zener and his temper, we might say. He has no respect for anybody. And, you know, there, he's got three rows of corn on the east side on mine side of my driveway, and on the north side, he has, varies one or two. And then on the road right-of-way is Zion Township, 240th Street. He's got, you know, places, five, six rows on, you know, on the road right-of-way. And if you guys, I mean, I guess if I don't stand up now, it's just going to get worse. And he's going to continue to abuse anything, and I would highly advise you guys to not allow this to go on. I don't know, I guess I'm assuming that this, from some of the neighbors are telling me that this is some sort of a contract that he is trying to obtain with Tyson or some, you know, where they're going to put the animals in and he's just going to be paid to raise them because he does not have enough manure to, or enough acres to spread the manure. And, you know, I guess, and the last thing I was listening to, it doesn't affect anybody in the county other than the immediate neighbors, you know, the people that are right there. And if you allow him to get away with this, he's going to continue just to push it and push it and push it and get worse. So, but, I'm sorry, but, you know, I mean, I, yep.
Thank you for your input. You're doing the right thing with the road issue. That is a township issue, so you're doing the right thing by contacting them. If he's planting on your, if he's planting on your land, that's certainly a legal issue. Right now, what we're doing tonight strictly is the 16 feet, the extension of the barn. Bethy Jo, right?
Mr. Chair, members of the board and those attending, yep, so it's the modification to make the one previously permitted barn, total confinement barn, 16 feet longer. And then, as you can see on the included feedlot facility footprint map, the, let me scroll down to that as well. The number eight was also proposed in the last conditional use permit, but they are not going to be constructing that, so they're basically proposing the number nine feed storage pad to be the replacement for the number eight to be used for storage for manure. And then they are requesting the additional number 10 and number 11 with this request, which is a 64-by-216-foot barn. And then the number 11 would be the 32-by-36-foot barn, the connecting number one and to number 10. So it is a little bit different than before, so it is kind of looked at as an amendment, per se, being they already had an approved conditional use permit earlier this year.
So it's the length of the barn a little bit, it's the connecting barn in the pad.
And a whole nother barn.
And a whole nother barn, and then the feed storage pad transitioning to manure storage eventually.
Got it. Okay?
And he does not have the adequate acres to spread that much manure. And living across the road from him for 22 years, everything with him is all short-term because of his hair-trigger temper. People don't want to deal with him very long, he gets mad, and they cut it off, so just please take that into consideration.
And part of the manure management plan...
That it's not going to be anything.
Thank you, Ellen. Part of the manure management plan, so where they can apply that manure, there's a lot of farmers that don't have enough land, that they have to make other arrangements for that. So, but that'll be addressed in another venue. So for right now, thank you for your comments. We need to keep moving. Members, you have any questions?
Question for Bethy. So it says there are no valid complaints on file for this facility. Have we received complaints in the past?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Jason, so in regard to that, as noted by the public during that part of it, that there is concerns of stockpiles, there's certain things during follow-up if, that we can and cannot share. But I will just note in regard to that, the actual feedlot facility itself with this parcel ID number has no valid complaints on that one. You can kind of see in your packet, the feedlot facility footprint map, the Northwestern parcel is owned by Daniel Zener, which is a different owner than the parcel in question with the feedlot request, so.
Okay. Any other questions from members? Seeing that, is there anyone else with us on WebEx, nobody else is in the room, from the public that would like to share some comments? If not, then closing the public hearing would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman is moved.
I'll second that.
Jason Wienerman moves to close the public hearing. Rich Blankish seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post the sign, the public hearing is closed. Further discussion?
The previous caller was correct, you know, you were there, the barn is done. So they were a little ahead. You know, they had the first permit, they should have. They criticize people when they do decks or whatever for not waiting, and this guy didn't wait. And he also made the comment about his temper. Well, I talked to him for a few minutes, and I could tell this was a person I did not want to be a neighbor to. And then he wants to, and I'm on the Feedlot Review Committee, so we saw this, so he's adding a whole nother barn. And I just made the comment, as an old farmer, maybe he should move some of these to a different location because you get disease in there, it can just go through the whole thing, and that was just not a, not going to happen. And so I, I don't know what to say about the whole thing.
Jason?
Mr. Chair, question, just in terms of that, so they, he had the permits at 200 feet, so, was it 26 by 2, whatever this, this is an additional 16 that he's going to add into the field, correct?
Yep. Originally, the request was for 64 by 200, and this would be adding an additional 16 feet.
So do we know, has he done 216 feet, or has he done 200, and now he's just waiting for the 16?
I haven't been out to the site since July, so, and there was conversations throughout this whole process with my supervisor and our director, so.
Okay, thank you.
They were ready to hang the curtains the day I was there, so you'd have to have it completely.
Joe and Rich, did you measure it? You're always good about measuring the wall. Maybe you measured it by chance, just in case. Okay? Well, thanks for that input.
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, Bethy Jo, I mean, you wouldn't have written this upright like this to allow them to be able to do this if they were overreaching a capacity limit or something like that, correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, in regard to that question, there was a lot of conversation internally with our office in regards to ordinance. We also have reached out to the MPCA. We had a conversation with me, myself, my supervisor, our basically contact for our area from the MPCA. And then we also had the conversation with the producer, the applicants attending as well. So we looked at capacity, we looked at square footage, we made sure that we were within the bounds of it not exceeding into a state permitting situation. So as they are with square footage, based upon what they are requesting in their application, we are, this is the correct process for them.
And tell me, you're probably going to watch this a little closer just to make sure for everybody's purposes that it's being done the way it should be done.
Yep, like you said, it's one of those things that if there is additional animals or square footage added, then just as we do with any application, when it gets to this level, we are looking at square footage and capacity and making sure that we're, you know, permitting things that are under the correct threshold, or directing the producers or applicants to the right agency.
And you may just want to make sure that's being complied with.
Yep.
This is certainly different than many others we see, so.
Correct, yeah. Typically, throughout this type of process, well, permit's good for two years. If they don't get the construction done in those two years, they can request an additional two-years extension for the permit. We usually follow up with a post-construction inspection following the completion of the construction, so.
Okay. Are we done with the discussion? Should we do the findings? Okay. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, the proposal is consistent with Land Use Zoning Ordinance 439, Sections 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, and 9.2.
Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Well, which one should I work off of, the one I was given or the one that they have in their packet? Yeah, I guess I'm asking staff, I've got two, which one should I work off of? This one, Jason gave me, this one is what I've got. I want to do the right one.
The environmental assessment worksheet next?
Nope, it's not on mine at all. So why don't I go off of Jason's, and I'll just pretend this one doesn't exist? Number one, we did that, that's legitimate. Number two, is there an environmental assessment worksheet, environmental impact statement, national pollution discharge elimination system, a state disposal system, a PT 2233 permit, or anything else required?
No, Mr. Chair.
If you didn't catch it, I did make that last one up, just, it's getting that time of the night. Number three, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county's comprehensive land use plan?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crowe, it does, under a variety of the agricultural goals. I'll just cite one, which is support agriculture as desirable land use for the long term and facilitate diversification of the county's agricultural economy.
Will the, number four, will the site configuration, number and type of animal units at this site prevailing wind conditions, impact any of the following areas? Say yes or no when I say it. Traffic?
No.
Public safety?
No. No.
Schools, parks, churches, other municipal residential areas?
No. No.
Other impacts?
On there, I say yes, the way he's got it structured, I'd say for disease control, it's poor.
More manure hauling on the highway roads and things like this also.
Okay. Five, has information been provided regarding impact property values? No. Six, have all recommendations of the Feedlot Review Committee and Feedlot SAPP been reviewed? Yes. Seven, other issues pertinent to this matter? I guess legitimately recognize Mr. Voight and his concerns, which are road issues that he's addressed with the township, planting on his land, which he'll need to address legally and separately himself, and just some other general issues that we heard there that will be addressed different ways.
Mr. Chair, is the manure management plan in there?
And there is one, right, Bethy Jo?
Was that in your, I mean, that should be another thing mentioned, if not.
There is an existing manure management plan, I assume.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Commissioner Persky, yes. So part of the permitting process for us, for feedlot, is for this site, they have to submit a manure management plan, which was submitted yesterday afternoon. So we do have a four-page checklist from the state that we will go through and make sure that all the requirements are met prior to, if the CUP is issued, prior to us issuing a feedlot permit for this.
So should we reference that or not?
You could reference it as an item of importance if you would choose to.
I don't think it would hurt.
Okay. Mr. Chair, other issues pertinent, I think it is pertinent to me in this case. If I look at it in a couple ways, it's pretty straightforward, but it sounds like there's some challenges with neighbors on some of the stuff, and the fact that the building's been already completed is a little presumptuous, and I think it's pertinent.
Mr. Chair, yes, I agree with Jason, and we had, we had to hear a lot of opinions and personal attacks, and we can't just say no because the guy's a jerk. We have to look at the application in and of itself as it is.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't hold it against him that he's got a horse either.
Okay. Findings are done. Motion to approve or deny would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crowe. Mr. Chair, Jason Crown, standing on the addition, I'm gonna recommend approval to the board and I'm just double checking the conditions here. Help me out, some of those two conditions, is there not?
Two conditions and then probably again the oversight recommendation. It's not a condition, but.
Yeah.
Suggestion.
Yep. That sounded good, but I'll, I'll make the recommended, recommendation to approve with the conditions.
Jason Crown moves to recommend approval with the conditions?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Sean Blackburn seconds the motion. So the motion's been made and seconded to approve, recommend approval of the application. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All same sign? Okay. Was there anybody other than Ken or do we do a roll? Did anybody other than Ken say no? No, so Ken was the no vote, so it passes six to one. Okay. Next item is the, are the minutes of the July 15th meeting? We get a motion?
So I'm gonna defer to all you.
Thank you. That'd be the right thing to do. Mike Perrell moves the minutes. Ken Mossman seconds them. Any discussion? If you didn't hear that, I picked up on both of those, so. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes, July 15th, say aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Minutes or other discussion? Joe, you wanna update us on the recommendation we had at the last meeting on moratorium for solar? Emergency moratorium?
Yes. You know, you folks had made the recommendation for the moratorium on solar. We had a brief discussion that started and it did not necessarily continue. We, we kept being put, put, do I say aside from continuing to discuss the issue? And then we did have a, a presentation by a solar company, by MPCA, and then also by XL after that. And at the last meeting also, I had concerns about having a discussion about the solar and we, we seem not to be able to, to move that issue forward. So, I can't tell you, I have a, a response back to you, Mr. Chair, about, you know, moving that moratorium forward or, or having a discussion on that moratorium.
Mr. Chair, related to the moratorium, my understanding is that it will be on the county board's agenda for Tuesday. So, county administration's handling that recommendation from the planning commission, so watch for that. As far as the lawsuit, we're in the phases of obtaining the data and information to give to the Minnesota County's insurance trust attorney. So, no, I, these things take a long time.
What, Angie?
Mr. Chair, that is my understanding.
Yeah, Angie, I'm sorry, I haven't seen the agenda, so. But, you know, we'd had a request, I think Commissioner Mergan, I think, requested it to be on the agenda, but we didn't get a definite answer. So I guess if it is moving forward, that's good.
There's the microphone, I coughed. Anybody wanna hear what I said before? Okay, thanks for that. I, I don't know if you guys are all getting these, but I'm getting a lot of the solar, join the solar, St. Cloud Solar, the community solar. I guess I never knew I was part of the St. Cloud community, but I just find it interesting. But I've gotten three of them recently, so I'm not sure what that's about. And then we should all be copied on the township memos where townships are, yes. So asking for the moratorium, I think we're all getting that, right? Asking for the moratorium and.
Received a couple of them. I, I don't know how, I think I've seen two. Is there more than that?
I think Painzol and Avon, I think. And then there's been some emails to commissioners from other townships where there haven't been, that have been shared with me, that haven't been official letters yet. But, and then some of them are pursuing the, their own moratoriums, obviously. Other than that, anything else? Anybody else has?
Mr. Chair, I do have seven items that I picked up on during the USS Solar. And so, by way of interest of time, I'm not gonna go through them right now, but I'll email them out tomorrow. And if there's anything that I missed, let me know and then we'll work on getting that information to you.
Okay. And then when you say all of us?
Yes.
Yep, perfect.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky?
Again, the question on that application about the benefit to the applicant and the detriment to the county. Again, I think we can do a better question than that. You know, I think of another example would be a total clear cut. Okay, should there be some form of restitution? Obviously, I think there would be, but, but is it a big detriment to the county? You know, when a person does that, you know, the question should be a little bit better than what it is. You should sit in on the Board of Adjustment meetings. That comes up very often, that question. Yeah, exactly. But you have to look at the fact that the, the neighbors are representative of the county. So they are the county, even though they're just a small part of it that's right there. That is, it's just the wording. I'm sure it's kind of a legalese thing. So they represent the county, but it's not like, I don't think you're, you're, you're looking for an actual impact on somebody who lives 50 miles away on the other end of the county. It's just kind of a representative term used. Yeah, agreed. And, and, and I'm just curious, that, the neighborhood includes the county. And, and you know, and like you say, the people next door includes the county.
And it would be a way to raise that. Couple months ago or half a year ago, we talked about the questions. The property value one was brought up. And I don't know what that process is, but maybe we should look at those questions again sometime.
Mr. Chair, members, just to speak to that maybe a little bit, when we talk about like the county resources in terms of like the comprehensive plan, if somebody were to do something that added a lot of sediment or nutrients into a smaller water body, you could significantly reduce the water quality of that water body, which would be a county resource. So that, you know, that question really gets to that is, is there a detriment to county resources that, that specific property, you know, is having an impact on? And that can very much, very easily happen, especially on a larger project. You know, so if you see a lot of sediment entering the water, sediment carries phosphorus. One pound of phosphorus can grow 500 pounds of algae. So that, you know, can have a significant impact. So I think, you know, there are situations where that is applicable. We don't always see it if there's not a direct conduit running to the water body maybe. But there, there are situations where there are impacts like that.
And maybe a simple addition like, does it affect the county and/or the immediate neighborhood? Well, you could say, okay, the immediate neighborhood more than the county as a whole. So that would be just a simple addition to get to your point, but again, that's not for tonight. But if you want to review the questions at some point, then let's do that.
I think the thing is, like I said, it's a legalese thing. It's just like if you were being sued by the state or, you know, that county attorney files a charge. You're, the charge and the wording is gonna say the same thing, the, the state is charging you. Or the, you damaged the state, the county, the, the country, depending on what level of law that was. So it's, it's just referring to the entity, but not breaking it down into specifics as far as a regional type of thing.
I interpret it as the residents of the county and their property rights.
The entity as it stands for, yes.
Mr. Chair, that is part of the ordinance. So just, just so you know, we can't just change the question. It would have to be an ordinance amendment. And that was a result of changes years ago for shoreline alterations and for after the factual alterations. And that question, as, as Ken indicated, originates from state law and case law for variances. That's, that question is verbatim the way it has to be asked for, for variances that are after the fact. It doesn't have to be the way verbatim for conditional use permits, but it would require an ordinance change. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll add that to my, my list that we have, even though we just updated the ordinance. And then we'll bring it back the next time we do an ordinance update and we can talk about it.
And let's do all the questions, including the property value one. I thought that was gonna be eliminated because we never get it. I must have missed that.
Well, Mr. Chair, we did have a whole, we did talk about that during one of our ordinance review sessions. We, we listed, I, I could send you my presentation from that night. But the property value question is important to have if somebody brings it up. But we restructured the questions so that you don't have to answer it unless somebody, as Jason did tonight, brings up property values. So there is value to have that question. Our insurance attorneys have suggested that remain. That would be our recommendation for that particular topic.
I, I believe though, you wouldn't necessarily have to go through each one of those line items. You could have stayed, I think you stated it earlier in one of them where it's, if, if any of these apply, we can speak up to them and we won't have to go through each of them. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That was our intent when we revised the conditions. Or the findings, rather.
Or tell me which ones I have to ask and which ones I don't have to, because trust me, I don't want to ask them if I don't have to.
I think you can just say, any other issues pertinent to the matter? And I think those all fall underneath that now.
Whatever staff gives me, I'll read and I'd be happy if it's fewer questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's basically what I have up here. So you'd read one through four and then you'd read five and you'd say, okay, members, are there any other issues pertinent to this matter? And it would be up to the rest of the members to bring up any of these things if it came up during the hearing.
So I won't read those individually?
You do not need to.
I will have to thank the staff of the county though, they got rid of exiting and put existing in there.
Ken, you stay around here long enough, you're gonna make changes around here, I'll tell you.
That's the first thing I checked out.
A question for Nick. Have the shoreline, the wall that came up at our last meeting? And we defer that to next meeting? Are, is there progress on that? Are we gonna see something at the next meeting, do you know, or?
Mr. Chair, member Wienerman, it is on the agenda for the next meeting. We have had some, we have had a, well, so the property owners did identify a shoreline contractor. They had contacted a number of them due to their busy workloads and things. A few of them did not agree or whatever to, to help them, but there is one that did. And they did submit a plan for altering, shortening one of the retaining walls. So there is progress on that front. They will be here next month.
And you're comfortable, or can you help make sure that they understand what our concerns have been?
Yeah, I reiterated to both the contractor and the property owners again that there's an expectation to see a reduction of wall length and wall height on, on the slope. So they're well aware of that and that was, that was expressed at the last meeting as well, so.
The last two meetings, yeah. Okay. Motion adjourned?
Jason Crown makes a motion.
Second? Okay, Mike and Jason move the, closes the meeting? Any discussion? If not, meeting adjourned, thank you.
One more question, Angie, are we supposed to take these along for our, put on our ashes or something? Or what's the deal?
Well, sitting in them.
I just saw these were laying here and today the buzz was.